Second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is the report of the planning staff.
Good evening. Board Angela Van, planning his own administrator. Let me see if I can share my screen. All work's all right.
Could you, could you stop for a moment with the volume here? You can't hear anything. Can you turn up the volume?
It was about time.
Didn't there stop?
We still can't hear you.
Okay. Just to give you the cases has been approved since your last, uh, planning board meeting, is it not in the center? Uh, Commission.
We still can't hear you.
November sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty meeting. You, you heard this on, at your September fifteenth, uh, planning board meeting. The first case is Palm Beach Atlantic University. To remember Palm Beach Atlantic is currently a community service plan development, approximately twenty-two acres. And they basically wanted to remove, uh, two multifamily buildings that they have bought over the years and incorporated into their campus for housing for the students. With the completion of a new dorm, they no longer needed them. So this request was for to move them from the plan development and to take them back to their previous zoning of MF land use and multifamily thirty-two zoning. And the last case the commissions approved on Monday was Ossory Avenue rezoning. This was a city initiated request to amend about ten properties to changes only from office commercial to neighborhood commercial because most of these buildings along Ossory Avenue, which is basically dominated by, um, churches and you have some, uh, public, private use, office uses on the east side. But these are like, for lack of a better, neighborhood shopping centers where you couldn't do any retail use in them because they were office. So staff felt that changes to neighborhood commercial would give their property a better chance and provide more retail oriented uses for the neighborhood. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions of that? And then the last thing we need to add to the agenda that we missed last month when we need to do our election of officers, my chair and vice chair for this year.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda are the remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none, which then brings us to the declaration of ex parte communications. And let me begin by saying, disclosing that I had two teleconference meetings regarding planning board case one seven one two C. One with the applicant and one with a neighborhood group opposed to the application, which was comprised of Elsitt Historic Neighborhood Association President Karen Steele, Kevin Lawler, and attorney Nancy Stroud. I also received seven emails and letters in opposition to the application and a petition signed by eighty-seven residents. I forwarded all this material to the clerk for inclusion in the record. I also received copies of thirty-six letters, emails, and support of the application from the applicant, which is already part of the record. None of these communications will prevent me from deciding the case before us tonight solely based on the evidence presented. Are there any other disclosures? Peter, why don't I just go, I'll go down my rows that I see. Peter, you're next.
Similarly, I had two conversations, one with Ken Lawler, Nancy Stroud, and Karen Steele for opposing the project. And similarly, I had a conversation with John Smith, Anne Marie Sorrell, Rick Gonzalez, and Mark Foley. But my decisions will be based on the information presented tonight.
Thank you, Deborah.
Okay, similarly, I had pretty much the same thing. I had two Zoom meetings, one with, um, Smith Nichols, Anne Sorrell, Don Smith. That's the applicants. And then I had another Zoom meeting with Karen Steele, Kevin Lawler, Nancy Stroud, who are opposed to this planning board case. I received several emails, several letters in opposition, as well as I received several letters today in favor. I received another letter from Karen Steele with approximately sixty-eight, I think, what was the petition, the sixty-eight signers. However, my decision will be made on the evidence presented.
Thank you, thank you so much. Todd, you're muted, but if you could go next.
Yes, I also had a Zoom teleconference with John Schmidt for the applicant on the planning board case seventeen twelve C. That same day, I also had a Zoom teleconference with the same neighborhood group that had concerns regarding the project. I received also a number of emails and letters opposed to the project and a petition. Also received a number of emails and letters in support of the project. Those have all been forwarded to the clerk for inclusion in the public record. However, any decision made tonight will be based, will be based strictly on the evidence presented here this evening.
Thank you, Andre, and you're muted.
So I received basically the same emails containing all the letters of opposition and of support. I was contacted by Karen Steele, but was unable to actually connect to have a, a meeting, whether it was an email or, or a Zoom meeting. So, but my decision will be based solely on the information in the, uh, was presented tonight.
Thank you, Scott.
Likewise, I received several emails, all of which I believe have already been forwarded to the clerk and incorporated into the record, as well as the petitions, both in for and supportive and against the proposed project, as well as, um, I was contacted by Karen Steele in that neighborhood group. I was not able to connect with them, to meet with them via Zoom. I did have a Zoom meeting with John Schmidt, Anne Marie Sorrell, and Mark Foley, who were representing the applicant. However, none of the materials that I reviewed, nor in that meeting, will anyway affect my decision here tonight, which would be based solely on the evidence and testimony presented before us at this hearing.
All right, thank you. Ms. White, now might be the appropriate time to read into the record the remarks.
Pursuant to Mayor Keith A. James's executive order twenty twenty dash zero five issued on April second, twenty twenty, the City of West Palm Beach's boards and committees are conducting meetings through media technology and have released the requirements to have a quorum of its members physically present at City Hall. On April fourteenth, twenty twenty, Mayor Keith A. James's executive order number twenty twenty-nine, correction, twenty twenty dash zero nine, which specifically provides the rules of procedure for conducting city meetings, including requirements for quasi judicial hearings. To ensure the ability for the public to continue to participate in this hearing, it is being streamed live and available for viewing in the city commission chambers located at city center, four zero one Clemente Street, on the condition that social distancing be practiced. Additionally, for those wishing to access the meeting remotely, they are able to do so directly through the applicable Zoom webinar link, as well as the city's usual media channels, including WPV TV eighteen, the city's website, and the city's YouTube, Facebook, and Twitter feeds. Anyone from the public who would like to provide comment on an agenda item is able to do so through the following. Number one, in the city center flagler gallery. Number two, dialing five six one three two zero six four five one, and leave any voicemail not to exceed three minutes. Number three, sending an email or video recording to P B, public comment at W P B dot org, or four, completing the online public comment form at W W W dot W P B dot org forward slash public comments. Those accessing the meeting directly through Zoom may also use the Q and A or raise hand features. Anyone accessing just the Zoom audio using their phone may raise their hand by pressing star nine. Regardless of method, please be sure to indicate the agenda number or case number for which you are providing comment. Everyone providing testimony must have video capability and will need to be sworn in. The swearing in will occur at the start of each case on the agenda. If you are about to provide testimony and were not sworn in, please be sure to indicate such and be sworn before offering your testimony. After the applicant presents their case, staff will provide a presentation and then the public will have an opportunity to speak or have their comments read into the record from previously received correspondence. The board will then go into executive session. Prior to rendering a decision, the board will confirm no additional public comments have been received by staff. Finally, for the members of the board, it is emphasized that Florida sunshine laws are applicable and you may not use the chat feature or any other form of individual communication to discuss matters with other board members, the applicant, or the general public during the meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, um, Mr. Roach, if you can hear me, do you be calling in the parties for our next case, so I swear them in?
Yeah, one second.
Take your time. We will be calling up case number one two four eight H H.
Okay, everybody has been granted access.
Okay. We are proceeding then with planning board case number one two four eight H H. And would everyone who plans to offer testimony this evening, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. May we hear from the applicant?
Good evening. David Miller, to cut later in our hearing before you tonight, seeking approval of a major site plan amendment. I'm going to share my screen for the presentation. Does everyone see this okay?
Yes, I do.
All right, great. So applicant is seeking to add approximately thirty-seven thousand square feet to the current master plan, consisting of two buildings, a ten-bed hospice facility and a twenty-five thousand square foot hospice administration, as well as this building would be housing the PACE program. These uses are by right within a community service district and to accommodate the construction of these new buildings, this approval would permit the demolition of two existing cottages on the property. As part of, as part of this application, we are seeking a waiver for the proposed six-foot wall along Haverhill. This wall would be consistent with the vested wall that's throughout the rest of the campus. This wall would be within the twenty-five foot setback, which is to the east side of Haverhill. The other waivers relate to the internal lot lines within this integrated plan development, such as the landscape buffer and the setback requirements. So as an integrated campus, these waivers allow for better flexibility for proper design and operation of the property while not increasing any adverse impacts since the, since the external buffers for this campus and the setbacks would still be complied with, consistent with the code. So this next slide provides some of the basic data for this property. The property, as I mentioned, is within a community service plan development. It's approximately forty-six acres and has allowed a maximum of one point oh F A R. However, the total site currently proposes zero point four two F A R, and adequate parking is provided throughout the site. And this is a overview of the full campus for Morris Life. As I mentioned, it's on the east side of Haverhill, and it's just south of the city's Lincoln Park baseball fields. And there's an elementary school on the west side of Haverhill. Now, this slide shows the affected parcel, which is, you know, the north parcel of Morris Life. It's outlined in red. The main campus is immediately to the south. And as you'll notice, it's a fairly vacant parcel with three structures currently existing. The blue outline identifies really the affected area for this proposal. And on the east side of this affected area, you'll see those two cottages that are proposed to be demolished for these improvements. This provides the site plan for the property. As you can see, the PACE and hospice offices are in a north to south orientation along Haverhill, while the hospice care center is in a west to east orientation along the northern boundary line for this parcel. There's parking and vehicular circulation on the southeast, and all of the circulation for this property is accommodated through the main campus. And the existing driveway connection located, you know, for Haverhill will be abandoned, and all access to this property would again be accomplished through the existing driveways. So the applicant has met the major amendment to plan development standards and the site plan review standards codified in section ninety-four dash thirty-five subsection C. So we appreciate all of staff's times with this, with this application, and we appreciate your consideration. Now, if there's any specific comments for us, we'll be happy to address, and we have a representative on the call as well for Morris Life, if there's anything specific.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions of the applicant from our board members? And if not, can we hear from the city staff? Mr. Schneider?
Good evening. For the record, Eric Schneider, principal planner. If you want, I can go through a presentation that looks almost exactly like the presentation the applicant gave. It's up to your call.
Does anyone wish to see this presentation a second time? And if not, I think you have your answer.
So anyway, to sum up, staff, as the staff report backed up, recommends approval of the requests. There were a couple of development regulations you saw in there and some waivers. Staff supports the waivers and the applicant's okay with the development regulation changes. And as you know, you did get forwarded on a letter of opposition from the residential project that is immediately to the east of the site. So, and hope can read, we'll read a little bit of that into the record or some summit into the record.
Can you summarize what you understand their objection to be?
There was a number of things in there. Some of them in, they, one of the things was stated that people were coming over onto their property. I'm not sure how that, where the fence gap that they mentioned in the letter is. They'd also mentioned about some landscaping and lighting issues. We had looked at these last time that Morse Life was before the board for some construction, and we went out there and when our landscape planner, there were some hedges out that our landscape planner had them replace. Not sure if they just haven't grown up yet. And Morse Life had looked at the lighting situation. The, I did forward the letter on to the applicant. They'll be looking at, or the applicant's representative, and they'll be looking to make sure that there's no negative impact for, since last time, this, the neighbor had sent a letter in. As far as construction, the other thing they mentioned in the letter was just the impacts of construction, you know, noise, dust, debris. It'd be my understanding that there would have to be following all of the city's construction requirements. I don't, haven't had any, heard any complaints about that through the building department. So I, I would imagine that if there was an issue, they would need to raise that with their building department. But there has been, as you saw in the, on the applicant's presentation and in my backup material in the planning board report, the new construction for this application will be handled in the very northwest quadrant of the property, which is not adjacent to the residential to the east of the site. So hopefully, there will be no additional impact that they will see.
All right, any further comments we should make, Mr. Schneider? If not, we'll take questions from the board, and we'll start with Scott. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric, just correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I saw the comments that were forwarded to be read in opposition here, um, and in your summation of them, or summary of them, would you agree with me when I say that when I read them, I didn't see anything in there that stated any sort of basis to which to say that the application doesn't meet the applicable, you know, major amendment to the plan development standards? I mean, there were issues that they had with, with condo, with the way things were being conducted on the property, maybe the way construction is taking place on the property. I didn't see any objections, and to your, to your knowledge, are there any objections that the requested amendment somehow doesn't meet the applicable standards?
I would agree with your statement that nothing in the letter directly listed out any of non-compliance with the applic, the applicable standards for the case that's in front of you tonight. It was more of a general, there's going to be more construction, and that's going to exacerbate the problems we have, which, if there are issues and they need to get looked at, we will definitely take a look at those, but there's nothing directly related to the application that is in front of you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions of staff? And if not, we'll hear from the public. Mr. Roach, do we have anyone who wishes to be heard on this application?
There's nobody from the public here on this item. The only thing was the letter mentioned by Mr. Schneider.
Okay. The applicant, do you wish to respond to this? You're not required to, but we'll give you that opportunity with respect to the, the letter in opposition?
We, we have no comment. I mean, if, if there are deficiencies, the applicant would be happy to remedy those, but I'll leave that up to staff and the, the city's landscape planner to, you know, take a look at the property to see if there's anything lacking that we'll be happy to take care of.
All right, thank you. Mr. Roach, I note someone, at least on my screen, has raised their hand. Does that deal with the public comment here, or is that something unrelated?
Yeah, I see Matthew Lattica. Hold on just one second. Bring them in. Okay, they're in the meeting now.
Hello. Hi, I just wanted, if I can.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, are you, if you don't mind, I need to swear you in, if you're offering testimony this evening. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Okay, please proceed.
Sure, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Matt Lattica. I'm the CEO of HomeSafe, and we currently have two pieces of property. We are to the west of that property. We're at fifty-one oh eight Forty-seventh Place North, and also fifty-one sixty-two Forty-seventh Place North. So we're on the south side of that school. And also, we actually occupy the two cottages that are on the campus right now that they're talking about demolishing. So I just wanted to come on to express our, our approval. You know, we're certainly in favor of this. Morse Life has been fantastic neighbors, and where you're probably hearing some of that opposition from the neighbors to the east, most likely it would have probably been some of our kids that would have been encroaching and going into their neighborhood. So it certainly would not be anything to do with Morse Life and their residents and the folks that they have. It would most likely be, you know, the kids that we house in those cottages right now. So we are certainly in favor of it. We look to continue to be great neighbors as we move across the street in the, in the next year. So just wanted to throw my two cents in there in support of the project.
Thank you, sir. If they know the comments, then we'll bring them back to the board for discussion. Mr. Roach, I noticed the timer never began.
My apologies, I was distracted with a few people in the room, so.
No, no problem at all. I'm more concerned for the next application.
Yes, understood.
Okay, all right. Well, at this point, we'll bring it back to the board. Does anyone have any issue or concern about this application? Any doubts or reservations? And if not, I'll look for a motion for approval. And look, and look.
Approval. Mr. Chairman of case twelve forty-eight H H with the six conditions of approval.
We have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Thank you. A motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Lord, for your consideration, we appreciate staff's time throughout this process.
Thank you. We will then proceed with planning board case one seven one two C.
Okay, just give me one minute.
Keep, keep your eye on that timer.
Okay, that should be everybody.
All right. Would everyone who plans to offer testimony this evening, please raise your right hand? And do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
I do.
All right, thank you. And may we then hear from the applicant? Mr. Schmidt, your, your mute button's on. I don't know if you're the one speaking, but. There you go. I, I just unmute you. Mr. Schmidt, are you giving the presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay. It's helpful to be unmuted. Just a little, little tip I learned. Hard fought lesson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members, for your time and consideration this evening. Myself and my colleagues here at the office, Rick Gonzalez from R E G Architects and Brian Kelly from Simmons and White are very proud and excited to be on this team.
Excuse me, Mr. Schmidt, I hate to interrupt, but you're almost completely out of our picture. You could just move over a little more. Much better, thank you.
As I say, we're happy and excited to present this to you this evening. The presentation is really going to be about twenty, thirty minutes. It's broken down to five areas, introduction to the project, the development program, the proposed architecture, planned development tools, and innovative design features we've incorporated into this project. As you know, the project is located along Dixie Highway. There is a one point two five acre property located along the north and point six two acres to the south. This area will be referred to as El Flamingo and the bottom point six acres of the El Cordoba. And what we, what was brought out in a U L I study from two thousand and twelve that was done with the city of West Palm Beach, the surrounding stakeholders, the neighborhood input, is they saw an emerging arts corridor and district happening here. So when you look at what's happening from the north-south, you've got the Kravis Center, P B I A Film School, the Norton Museum of Art, Norton Sculpture Garden, the Armory Arts Center, Paul Fisher Gallery, M Co., us, and as you continue south, you get into the, the antique. Emco, us, and as you continue south, you get into the, the antiques and art down in that area. So I think this is quite an opportunity to even strengthen that. This is some pictures of the Carefree past. This is a picture.
Mr. Chair, John, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you're, if you're showing a PowerPoint, it hasn't been shared, so if you can share.
It's not shared.
Oh, we're not seeing it.
Okay.
You share screen, I think that's how it was.
And should be this one.
There you go.
And then, I'm sorry about that.
No problem. We just find it more helpful to see.
Absolutely.
It's kind of like the mute feature.
You can, you can see it, you can see it now?
Very analogous there. Thank you, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So this is the, this was the five sections. This is the, this is the map that we were talking about, the 1.25 acres, the El Flamingo and the El Cordoba. This is the design district that was identified with the ULI study in 2012, as well as the stakeholders and with neighborhood input. Again, we felt that this was an opportunity and great location for what we're proposing tonight. This is pictures of the Carefree from the past. And more recently, the three pictures along the right side were of the Carefree that Mr. Cohen bought, the owner of the property. And he decided with the neighbors and after their request to demolish the blighted building, you know, an unsafe as the building had gone into disrepair through hurricanes and overtime. This project's been going on about four years, as you know. We went out to the neighborhood with our initial proposal in 2016 and held a neighborhood meeting in Emco. There were subsequent meetings and submittals to the city as we moved forward. Now, as this moved forward over the two years, we were meeting with neighbors. The proposal, as it were, was not really gaining support with the neighborhood. And then when we went to you two years ago, we only moved forward with the six changes to the mix of future land uses that were on the property as well as zoning. So we went and cleaned all that up. And we removed this petition, which was the site plan, the architecture, and the plan development. And this is kind of an important date to us where we really pulled back that, that petition, that portion of the petition, and went and had additional meetings with neighbors. And as that has progressed over the following two years, there has been subsequent revisions, resubmittals, you know, as we, as we've tried to move this forward and try to make neighbors happy with what we could do. I've been sent out on numerous requests, which with regard to, will the project also work when, if Dixie Highway was reduced? Can we look at one-way streets? Can we look at permitted parking? Reported to them, came back and, you know, and made subsequent revisions. And our final submittal has been just last couple of months ago at 9:09. And that's the application that you'll see tonight. So it's over been over at least 13 meetings and outreaches with individuals and groups as we've tried to push the project forward. This map is just a contextual map that I wanted you to look at with what I call kind of neighborhood intensity. The green stars are obviously the property. And if you look down here at the key, all the blue properties are non-residential property. So we're very consistent with what's going on in the corridor. The light pink ones are what we would call, our office would call traditional single-family lots. The darker pink are, go into single-family lots that have two and three units on them. It might be a garage apartment or several garage apartments. And in fact, one of the properties in the Cordoba is four units used as a VBRO. So it's not, we're not directly adjacent to what I would consider traditional single-family housing. The yellow line out here is the limits of El Cid Historic District. We are not located in the historic district, but we feel that we've done numerous things to ensure compatibility with, with this. We also have right here, as part of the purchasing that Mr. Cohen did, he also had to buy this property right here, which is a single-family lot. And we've done additional buffering that I'll mention later on in here to, again, use that as a buffering tour, to buffering to the neighborhood. The site is also a very walkable and bikeable piece of property. The red in here is within a quarter mile of the property with over 500 units. Within a half mile, we've got over 2,000 units. Within one mile, 7,000 and growing. So we think that that is a very walkable piece of property and it will further do a lot to reduce our traffic. And that's going to be through, obviously, biking, walking, trolley, and busing on the property. So we, we feel that that is also bringing down the traffic trips that are going to be associated with this. This is the rendering from the air, and I just want to now reorient you again with it, with El Flamingo, the Flamingo Street here. At the traffic light, you've got Barcelona here, and we've got the El Cordoba here. Going to go through the program for those blocks. So the northern block, the El Flamingo block, we're doing six arthouse theaters. We are doing two restaurants and 32 residential units. Again, this is the four-story component of the building, a three-story component of the building, and the applicant's additional single-family lot here on the south. We also, I'm sorry, we also have two floors of underground parking that you'll see under the architecture review with over 306 parking places provided. It's considerably over what code required by standard code by 23 spaces. In the El Cordoba block, we're doing, oh. In the El Cordoba block, we about 9,000 square feet of office and retail on the bottom floor, 26 units on the three floors above it. Again, 100 spaces provided and two floors of parking below, 88 spaces required, so 12 over. So this project is providing 35 spaces over standard code in terms of parking. Project concessions. There's over 20 concessions that have happened over this time. I want to elaborate on these a little bit. We reduced the height from 97 feet to 71 feet and 66 feet respectively. As we work down the street, we decreased the number of waivers that are on here, the, the side interior setback from 129 feet to 83 feet. We've increased the open space from 25 to 33%. We decreased the lot coverage from 82 to 67%. We decreased the theater seats from 800 to 600. And this is, this is a big point here that I want to, that, that has been kind of confusing. The previous Carefree Theater was seven, 750 seats. It was one giant room, so a venue would happen at one time. People would park all through the neighborhood, and that's been a major concern of the neighbors. And we've tried to, really tried hard to address that. And what we've done is we went from 800 to 600 seats. And they're broken up into six theaters. They're really microtheaters. We have two at 50 seats, two at 100 seats, and two at 150 seats. So they'll have staggered start times and staggered release times. They won't have, this isn't, we're not going to be showing a blockbuster, you know, Return of the Jedi type movies here. This is an arthouse theater. Mr. Cohen owns over 700 films, and this is a passion project for him to have a place to show those. He owns several other theaters throughout the country where these are being shown. We've eliminated the decorative feature on the top. We brought those fires down. We've eliminated the side setback waiver, eliminated the FAR waiver, eliminated a waiver for screening and landscaping of vehicular uses. There is no vehicular uses on this property. There's no parking lot. I think that's really important to an urban setting and to a neighborhood. We reduced the FAR from 2.5 to 1.5. We reduced the proposed density by 40% from 97 units to 58 units. We have agreed to an eight-foot privacy wall for the neighbors up from a six. Decreased the commercial development from, by 38% from 190,000 to 117,000, which has then decreased the daily traffic trips from almost 3,000 to 2,100. We meet the parking requirements without utilizing the shared parking allowance. Now, the code would allow us to use a shared parking allowance. Certainly, that's appropriate to a vertically integrated, you know, mixed-use project, but we did not do that. We want to make sure that we're not putting any strain on the neighborhood. We've increased the buffer material. I'm sorry. We've increased the buffer material. We've matched the strengths of the neighborhood.
John, I don't think you're muted, John.
Okay. We've demolished the old lighted Carefree Theater buildings, and we've cleaned up the adjacent single-family structure. We went through Historic Preservation Board, got all the approvals, and that project will move forward along with the Carefree to bring that back to a nice single-family lot. We continue to maintain it and be a good neighbor, and we think that'll be a caretaker's quarters for our eventual project. Commercial plan developments. Under the comp plan, future annuity settlement 1.7 and 1.71, as well as the zoning code 94207 for plan developments. They state, "The intent is to encourage, through incentives, the use of innovative planning techniques to create a more desirable, attractive development in the city." Incentives are included, but are not limited to relaxing or waivers of height, setbacks, lot dimensions, and lot area requirements. They allow an increase in density as well as floor area ratio, and they allow a mix of permitted uses not normally allowed. All our, all our uses are by right. And what that's doing is, it encourages innovative design. It provides a flexibility from the standard code that is necessary for this infill development. And I'm going to turn it over to Rick Gonzalez. He's going to talk about the architecture, and then we'll come back with the waivers and other requests.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, citizens, and staff. I'd like to go over the design. As John has mentioned, we spent a lot of time with Mr. Cohen. Charles is Arts Buffer Historical Films and Historical Architecture. He has a residence in Palm Beach, and he loves the adjacent historic neighborhoods of El Cid, Mango Promenade, Flamingo Park, and a lot of that was put into the inspiration. We looked also at design, architecture, modern interpretation of historic architecture. So this first slide here shows you where we picked up some of our design intent, design inspiration with a whitewash, with the architectural detailing, but still in a modern interpretation. And of course, we always look at home, right? We looked at places nearby, on Clemadistry, on Palm Beach too, the, the Vias and so forth to show the character and style of architecture majoring in Revival, which is a timeless and classic style of architecture, and which we, of course, find very appropriate for this site because we're adjacent to one of the most important historic neighborhoods in the city of West Palm Beach. I'll have a couple of renderings to show you now. This is a close-up. If you would be driving south at Flamingo, you're looking at the Flamingo in the front, and then you're looking at the Cordoba in the back, the four-story scale. At the third floor, we have a significant cutback with the railings and the setback in the corner with the covered loggia spaces. You also see a marquee, a Carefree marquee, which is going to be inspired and designed to bring back a memory of the original Carefree signage. Here's a bird's eye view. Now, same angle, but a little bit higher. So you see the four-story building. We then have a small club on the fifth floor with some trellis area and a swimming pool. And it starts stepping down towards the neighborhood. You see the commercial to the, to the east, and then, of course, the residential mixed-use to the north. And across the street, you have Emco a block away, which is four stories. So it's part of the eclectic mix of the street, both from the historical original buildings to buildings that have been recently built all the way down on South Dixie. Here's now another view. This is now from the neighborhood, looking back. The, the Flamingo on the right side of the rendering of the pictorial here with the adjacent house, the step-down commercial. On the left is the El Cordoba with the Emco building on the other side of the street. This is an important slide because we're trying to show you that, as John mentioned, the adjacent uses and the protection of the historic neighborhood. In the case of the Cordoba, you have two large residences with apartments for a total of about four units on each, on each one of those sites. So there's a apartment-to-apartment relationship. And on the Flamingo side, you can see, besides the L-shaped new proposal, we have the adjacent land or historic home that Mr. Cohen is going to restore as a caretaker's house. And of course, also commercial building adjacent on the far northeast corner of the project. I'll start with the elevations here, the Cordoba elevations and the Flamingo elevations. These are the side street views on the top. The Flamingo West elevation, which is the primary elevation facing Dixie. It's a very nice presentation of the building with the twin towers identifying the middle. The middle is where you come into the lower-level restaurants and take an escalator up to the theaters on the upper floor, which occupy the upper floors. And then the Cordoba on the west side is a little smaller with the four floors with retail uses on the, on the first floor. And then, of course, on, on all of these elevations, you see the section indicating two levels of underground parking. This is now the north elevations of both buildings. The Cordoba building is a pretty skinny building, and then you can see the Flamingo, the north elevation with the stepping down and the entryway to the buildings. And then on the south elevations on the bottom, you can see also the garage entry on the Cordoba building. And then the Flamingo south elevation and the step-down farther beyond that, behind the house that we own. Now, we got some, Peter, we appreciate your comments, and we got some other comments from the, the board in terms of the mitigating the views towards the east on the, on the Cordoba building. So we're proposing to lower it by one floor and five feet setback. On the upper floor, we're going to just turn those two corner units into one-bedroom units instead of two bedrooms, remove the balconies, and allows us for much less views and masking towards the eastern neighbors. Here's another view of that, how we propose to treat that with the roof. It's actually a nicer elevation, more interested, varied by doing that and the balconies down below. And now I'm going to give it back to John. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to reorient, just to reorient you with the, the block again, the, the north block here in the rendering and the south block. And we're going to go through the vehicular circulation, loading and drop-off areas. So as you know, Dixie Highway is an FDOT road. They do not allow additional curb cuts along Dixie Highway. We see that down south with those at Antique Row. And we're required to use the secondary streets for access points. So that's our limitation there. If you were to come in from the light of Flamingo Drive, the first lane that we've provided here is for valet parking. That's directly adjacent to a pedestrian zone. So you can pull in here, use a valet if you, if you choose to go and patronize one of our, our uses here. If you are a resident, somebody that wants to park their own car or a visitor, you can use the bypass lane to go into the bottom, to go into the garage. And this additional lane will be able to, the valet will be able to use this as both ingress and egress to make sure that we're not stacking in the neighborhood streets. At any time of release of a movie or, you know, the, the restaurant at peak times, we want to make sure that we were stacking and providing plenty of stacking within our property underneath the building, you know, traffic that the neighborhood can't even see. Upon exit, you can go out to Barcelona as well as up to the light at Flamingo Drive. Both those entries are to be channelized, so you exit west, again, to not have people go into the, the neighborhood and utilize the light and the commercial Dixie Highway corridor. The El Cordoba building is accessed from El Cordoba, both entry and exit, and they're able to go both ways in that one. The traffic, we, we were acknowledged and approved by Palm Beach County Traffic and have obtained their letters in, in approval. The traffic studies that we have to use with, with Palm Beach County and the ITE manuals are, I think, out of date. Our traffic engineer thinks it's out of date, using ULI and some other standards. You know, the daily trips are going to be 28% less and 38, 39% less in the peak hours. The city-approved property analysis shows that all three intersection on Dixie Highway will operate at acceptable levels of service with minimal queues for both the four-lane and two-lane. And what I mean by that is, right now Dixie Highway was, is a four-lane. We were required to study this if the Dixie Highway, whoever go on a road diet, and it passed both those standards. And then I just want to note that the parking, if we were to use the shared parking standard, which we did not, it would only require 350 spaces. And, and this is a city, city shared parking, and we provide, using that, over 57 spaces overparked to address the concerns of the neighborhood. Again, commercial planning tools, as we mentioned before, they're incentives to encourage innovative designs. Again, relaxing and waving and allowing items and flexibility. And we are requesting 11 waivers. I've broken them into really three sections. And the waivers are used as a, as a, as a tool for the PD. We're asking for the minimum acreage requirement. We're asking for the minimum acreage requirement to be waived. The requirement is five. We're asking for one point eight. Our our front setback orientation is from Dixie Highway. And we have signage in there because the blade sign that that Rick brought up was chewing up a lot of the the signage for some of the other shops around there. So we had to ask for a signage waiver there. The second group we'll we'll talk about in depth are setbacks. And then finally, the third group is really lot coverage, landscaping, open space. So we've kind of grouped those together to help better explain them. And the PD waivers, we're having to use a suburban code and really an urban setting. So the code, you know, has been established after these lots have been replatted. Most of these lots were planted in the nineteen twenties. The code has followed up on that, but they did put these PD waivers in there to allow some flexibility as we as we move forward. So the suburban code that we're having to use is the same code that that's used throughout the city except for the downtown. And it's used in the city on Okeechobee Boulevard, on Northlake Boulevard, where it's, you know, maybe a fast food building or a, you know, a car dealership that has a sea of parking in front of it and with the building, you know, pushed back on the property. And that's not what we're trying to do here. That's not what the board has passed at the at the Palm Beach Atlantic, the Norton, you know, and three eleven, as well as those at Antique Row. And and we think that contextually, we were, you know, within this, within the rights to ask for this. So the first set, so the first setback request is, we want to push the buildings up to Dixie Highway. So we're asking for, you know, that waiver to push them up to the street. We still provide for a very wide pedestrian zone along with the FDOT right away. We have eight to twelve feet of nice pedestrian zone along this frontage. The side setback waivers that we're asking for, again, the interpretation of the code is, we have to use the highest point of the building. As Rick mentioned, you know, the building steps back from four to three stories. That's really where adjacent to a three story component, but I've got to go back and use my highest point clear over here on this side of the building and ask for a waiver. If we were asking for a waiver here, it'd be about in the thirty-two foot range. It's basically the the setback is half the height when when you interpret the code. Again, our applicant's property is is owned right here and creates a further buffer. The rear setbacks right here against our property is seventeen feet. Again, we've got the applicant's property combining ours and that one. We've really got ninety-seven feet, almost a hundred feet to the closest residential unit. And over here, we've got a twenty-five foot setback. Again, the measurement has to be from the closest point. It's really this, the twenty-five feet is measured from a balcony. The building is really thirty feet. And then, as Rick pointed out, on the fourth floor, he was able to look at getting an additional five feet on that floor and really step it back. The PD waivers and landscape areas that I want to point out here are that the code requires fifteen percent of minimum landscape area. We're at ten percent, so we're asking for a five foot waiver. But again, it's an interpretation of the the suburban code. If you look at this bottom corner where I've highlighted this, we have a parking garage over, you know, eighty-five, ninety percent of our site. And if we have a parking garage underneath, I'm even though in our sandwich here, we've got parking garage, two levels, we've got four feet of dirt here to be planting trees, palms and shrubs on, you know, on the upside, driving around and walking around, it's going to look like green space, but we're not able to count it. So let's move over to these maps and I'll show you where the green space has been counted. So the green space has been counted along the buffers on both properties. It's counted all the foundation planting on both properties. We've got rooftop pools in both locations with green space. I can't count it again because it has a building underneath it, so we're not able to count that. We're also going out beyond the plan development boundaries, out in Flamingo, out on Dixie Highway, out on Barcelona and out on Cordoba, reworking those, reworking those streets as requested by this, as requested by the residents to match the streetscape that's happening over here, provide additional greenways, provide additional trees that are off property. If we were able to count those, which I think we should be able to, we exceed the green space requirement and it contains sixteen percent of green space. In terms of other landscape mitigation, we propose, we we talked about proposing an eight foot wall along the east property line and giving green space to the neighbors. We've talked to several neighbors throughout. We were pushing the eight foot wall to our curb and providing green space on the outside to provide additional green space for the properties. Along Flamingo Drive, we've exceeded the number of trees by three. And we've also increased the heights from twelve foot at planting to sixteen foot planting. We've got additional three trees that were upgraded to oaks and we went from twelve to sixteen feet along Barcelona. Three, three additional trees, fifteen along here, and increased the tree height from twelve to sixteen, as well as an additional twenty-six palms along this green space. And that was a request in one of the meetings with Mr. Wayne Gold, also from the neighborhood. We've proposed another another four trees along the Dixie Highway corridor, and we increased those from twelve to twenty. We've increased these, these additional trees from twelve, twelve to twenty. We've got additional trees along this corridor, an additional eighteen palms, provide additional breakup of the facades. An additional two trees were upgraded to sixteen feet from twelve. And then we're exceeding code and went to twenty feet. So at installation, you know, along Dixie Highway corridor, we're going to have twenty foot trees, going to look very, going to be very mature and green. And this is just a cross section of how it was going to work. That was a, that was a concern by staff of would that really work? When we talked about the approved PD waivers that are a very common tool, the city approved very similar projects, the thirteen oh nine South Flagler, Villas at Antique Row, three eleven that you see coming out of the ground right now, a great project, the Magnolia Court, the Norton Art Museum, one twelve South Flagler and Palm Beach Atlantic. And most of these plan developments utilize the waiver by design for design. All right, I want to go over the innovative features and we'll be closing this up shortly. The underground parking is a very expensive feature. There are very few within the city and we used a conservative parking approach. I mean, these are, these spaces are very expensive, over fifty thousand apiece, and we're providing ample and way over the top of what the requirement is. And it removes the need for any neighborhood parking. And we have, if you look at our justification statement, we have incentivized people to utilize this. If you're an employee, you will be given a pass to park here. That was a concern that a bus boy, you know, making fifteen dollars an hour now wouldn't be able to, you know, pay to park in here and wouldn't. He's going to be required to park there and given a pass. If you're, if you're a resident, you'll be given a pass. If you're a guest of a resident, you will be validated. If you come here and patron our restaurants, our retail and office, you will be given a free pass to utilize this parking. Mr. Cohen, I think, is bringing a nice cultural amenity here, the Art House Theater. It's an additional cultural addition to the corridor. Rick Gonzalez has done a great, great plans with the detailed Mediterranean architecture, which is, you know, is strategically paced privacy designs along the Cordoba. We have put bathrooms and closets and really tried to limit the views eastward. We've got fenestration character and Mediterranean features that are consistent with outriggers, balconies, you know, I think he's done a great job. This will add support and enhance the corridor uses as a design center. Mr. Cohen owns Design Centers of America, and we feel that this will be kind of a micro, micro center for them to utilize their design services up here and will fit in the neighborhood. We've got enhanced streetscape. We've got curving and striping to direct traffic out to Dixie Highway. We have uniquely vertical integration rental housing. We have vertically integrated uses. We have a luxury rental product that you have not seen on this corridor, enhanced landscape materials, significant upgrades at installation, interior trash rooms, you know, we've got restaurants here, smells that, you know, that that's a concern. And we made sure that that was going to be within our building and not pushed to the edge of anybody. And we also provided additional loadings in the Cordoba block. There was not a loading space required. We didn't want, you know, the, you know, the UPS, the Amazon truck, you know, parking in the neighborhood and causing, causing, causing a clog in traffic. So we provided them loading spaces. We also provided Uber and drop off spaces along those corridors. So we really tried to take care of these things. In terms of project compliance, future land use element goal number two, objective two point one, the city shall facilitate and encourage infill development, especially east of ninety-five. Future land use element goal three, the city shall strengthen the quality of life, visible and positive reputation by creating highly vibrant and diverse cultural environment. The zoning, the zoning development regs ninety-four two oh seven is to encourage through incentives, as we talked about, land planning and development techniques to create more desirable, attractive development. Land development standard ninety-four thirty-five, site design and quantitative development standards. We meet section ninety-four through thirty-two amendments and rezoning standards, section ninety-four two oh seven, commercial plan development standards. We have staff recommendation of approval. We are in agreement with the conditions of approval, but we are continuing to tweak items number one and items three through five on timeframe. So we're in concept, we're agreed, you know, with all with all the conditions of approval. And items three through five is just a timing thing. When we post surety, it was what they were asking us to do it at time of fifty percent occupancy, and this is one monolithic building. We're not going to be doing that. So been working with engineering and we'll work that out. Items number one were, they wanted us to see if we could reduce the top of the building. I think we're able to do that as well as meet the landscaping that there was a concern of theirs. This project is designed, not only fits with the neighborhood, it creates an urban quality, a quality urban environment that encourages walkability, a community gathering opportunity, and it will prove to be an asset to the neighborhood, the city and the citizens of West Palm Beach. We have over thirty-six letters of support and an additional nineteen on the website to date. We have enclosed those and sent them out to you previously. And we are here as a team to answer any questions that you have, and we appreciate your consideration of the season. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So any questions of the applicant? And let me start, well, just as everyone have any questions of the applicant? Todd, go ahead, please.
Thanks for that presentation. I apologize if you already answered this by Zoom.
Todd, you're kind of breaking up on us.
A little bit, but.
It's spotty.
I was trying to ask the waiver for the impervious area or the pervious area reduction. Were you able to evaluate whether that's going to affect your ability to meet the city's stormwater requirements?
We've had, we've had lots of meeting with engineering. One of the things that wanted to put out there is potentially, you know, an additional condition of approval to ensure that all our, that the building would have all downsides and all downsides that we put in directly in the storm sewer. We will not be able to get a permit without us, you know, being able to pass the drainage standards.
That answer your question, Todd? Your mute button's on, so. You kind of froze there. We'll come back to you. Scott, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to know, we received in several of the letters that we received prior to the to this meeting tonight, we, a lot of issue that some of the, one of the issues that was consistently raised by the neighbors to the property would be, was that was concern about the underground parking garage and the requirements for that garage to have twenty-four seven pumping ongoing. Can you talk a little bit about the pumping requirements that the underground garage will will pose? And what, if anything, will be done to mitigate any noise or impacts from such pumping? And also, where will the, you know, where, how will the pumping be accomplished?
Let me see if I can show you this slide here. Give me a second here. This is a, this is a shot of just about two blocks from us, maybe three. It's actually located east. And this is a two story parking garage that's being constructed right now. Of course, it, that will, if there were pumping, there, it's going to have to be taken care of from a water quality and water quality standard. We will not be able to have a permit. But I guess my point of this is, is it's being, it's being done two blocks east of us, even closer to the intercoastal, and we don't feel this is going to be an issue to address. Also, the city has, also, the city has embarked on a twenty million dollar stormwater and drainage project along the Flagler corridor. You know, the issue is really, is really the the tides, not the drainage. And we will, we've, we've had to spend six months mapping all the existing drainage around our property on Dixie Highway and all three streets. And any repairs necessary will be part of our project to link into the overall system.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right, if not, can we hear from staff?
I'm just going to start sharing my screen. Hang on a moment. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and is it moving?
It is.
Okay, great. Good evening, Linda Louis, Senior Planner for the record. So my presentation is going to focus on staff's analysis of the waiver requests. But before I start going through the waivers, I just wanted to summarize some of the site and area characteristics which were important considerations in staff's analysis of the waivers. So the subject property is located east of Interstate ninety-five, which is an older part of the city and mostly comprised of smaller lot sizes that are primarily developed. The South Dixie Highway corridor, where the project site is located, has historically been known as a commercial corridor within the city. And many of these parcels along the corridor are less than an acre in size and about residential use. Given the location, the subject property is comprised of infill parcels. And over the recent years, staff has seen an increase in redevelopment activity along the corridor. Some of the larger projects that had been approved along the corridor within the last eight years include Villas at Antique Row, Mango Magnolia Court and thirty-one eleven South Dixie Highway, all which are mixed use plan development projects. So it's important to note that staff acknowledges that the zoning code does not adequately address urban infill outside of the downtown area. And a lot of the current language is written for new developments on larger parcels of land. So in that sense, you know, this played an important consideration in the evaluation of staff's waivers. So as the applicant had mentioned, a total of eleven waivers are being requested for the proposed redevelopment project. The first waiver request is for the minimum land area. The zoning code requires a minimum area of five acres for any commercial plan development. The project site is one point eight acres in size, and therefore, the applicant is requesting a waiver of three point two acres, which is sixty-four percent. The criteria for the consideration of the waiver request for the minimum land area per the zoning code is particular circumstances justify such reduction. And the requirements for plan development district zoning and benefits to be derived from plan development district zoning can be derived in such a lesser area. So in terms of staff's findings, the proposed development project is unique and located along an active and walkable commercial redevelopment corridor, which is an ideal location for attractive and innovative projects that can further stimulate redevelopment activity in the area. As noted in the previous slide, small parcels characterize the areas east of I ninety-five, and it's very uncommon to accumulate more than five acres of land for a project within the redevelopment. for a project within the redevelopment area. It's important to note that a number of planned development projects east of 95 have been approved by the city commission. And these include 3901 South Flagler Drive, 112 South Flagler Drive, and 1551 North Flagler Drive. All these projects had sought more than a 65% waiver for the minimum land area and have been approved by the city commission. The second waiver request is to the definition of the front lot line. So pursuant to section 94611, front lot line shall be the public street right of way which possesses the narrowest length. So the subject property is unique in that it possesses multiple street frontages. The project has frontage along South Dixie Highway, Flamingo Drive, Barcelona and Cordova, which are all residential streets. So by definition, these residential streets are considered the front lot line for the project. Given the significance of South Dixie Highway and its clear hierarchy in relationship to Flamingo Drive, Barcelona Road and Cordova Road, it's the applicant's desire as well as the staff, city staff, that there is a preference for South Dixie Highway frontage to be considered the front lot line for the purposes of applying setbacks and landscape buffer. And so therefore, because of the roadway hierarchy, it makes more sense to make South Dixie Highway as the main project frontage. It should be noted that the same waiver request has been applied to the project just south of the Palm Beach Post site at 3111, and that is currently under construction. This waiver covers the front building setback. For the zoning code, the required front building setback is correlated to the height of the building at its highest point. Therefore, the minimum required front setback for the El Flamingo building is 27 feet. And for the El Cordova building, it's, is 22.8 feet. The project is providing a minimum setback of five feet from the front property line. Staff does not have an issue with this waiver. One of the attractive features of this project is that there is a lot of emphasis on establishing a street presence and pedestrian activity by placing the building closer to the street. In addition to that, many existing buildings are lined up to the street, which contributes to the character and walkability of the South Dixie corridor. In terms of analyzing the height, the proposed project is four and four and a half stories in height, which is consistent and compatible with the newer developments along the corridor, which are two to three stories in height. If you look a little further north to Palm Beach Atlantic, there is even greater height along that part of the corridor. So this waiver covers the interior side building setback, and this applies only to the El Flamingo building site due to the irregular shape of the parcel. This parcel also possesses an interior side lot line. So the code requires a minimum of 83.6 feet. The project is providing 28.72. For mitigation, the applicant will be utilizing the step back approach where the upper levels of the building are set back into the building footprint to make the lower levels of the project appear shorter at eye level. This technique is often utilized to provide for building height and volume transition from the adjacent uses. So in the, in this case, based on the architectural plans provided, the ground level for the interior side facade is 21 feet high, and the upper levels step back into the building footprint with a greater setback and building volume and height concentrated towards the South Dixie Highway frontage. In addition to that, a landscape buffer with an eight-foot-high wall along the entire east property line of the project will provide separation and screening from the El Cid Historic District. So as the applicant had noted, the developer is also the property owner at 309 Barcelona Road, and that also provides an additional layer of buffering. So according to the plans, it has a lot depth of 125 feet. Total setback from the, the, the building would be 153.72 feet, which exceeds the, the minimum required setback to the interior side. So this slide covers the rear building setback for the El Flamingo building. The code requires rear building setback of 83.6 feet. The applicant is providing 17 feet. Again, the applicant for mitigation is utilizing the step back technique. The ground floor level for the rear facade is 21 foot high with the upper levels stepping back into the footprint with a greater setback. Additionally, the landscape buffer is provided with the eight-foot-high wall and landscaping along the entire east property line, which will separate the project from the El Cid Historic District. Again, 309 Barcelona Road is an additional buffer for the project. If you look at the lot width of 309 Barcelona, it's 80 feet wide. Total from the building setback would create a building setback of 97 feet from the rear property line, which exceeds the minimum required building setback. In addition to that, a ground floor residential unit will be provided at the southeast corner of the El Flamingo building, which lines up with the residential to the east and to the south. And that is to maintain consistency with the residential character of the neighborhood. So this waiver request covers the rear setback of the El Cordova building. It is required by code that a 69.2-foot setback is provided. The applicant is providing a 25-foot setback. So this is the waiver request that staff has some concerns with. The El Cordova building parcel has a shallow lot depth. It is only 100 feet. And the proposed building height is 64.4 foot, and it abuts residential. It's in staff's opinion that based on the review of the submitted plans, inadequate mitigation protecting the abutting residential lots from the height of the building have been provided in the design of the El Cordova building. So, you know, this was covered a little bit by the applicant. I have, I need to look at the plans further in detail, but staff is recommending in order to mitigate the impacts of the height of the fourth floor end units facing the residential on the east side of the building is pushed back into the building footprint to provide better building height and volume transition from the abutting residential uses. A critical, critical component of mitigating the height is the rear landscape buffer. And at this time, staff needs some assurances from the applicant that the landscape buffer can accommodate the eight-foot-high wall and specified tree and palm species. I did see the elevations. I do need to have a closer look at those, but it looks like that, that, you know, concern has been addressed. So this waiver request covers minimal waivers required for lot coverage, landscape area and open space, because the proposed project is urban infill and characterized by smaller lot sizes. There are challenges to meeting the requirements, the minimum and maximum requirements of the zoning code outside of the DMP. It's in staff's analysis that the waivers, you know, granting, the waivers would not cause any significant detrimental impacts to the site or the surrounding area. In terms of mitigation, the applicant is proposing to increase its foundation planting, rooftop landscaping, the incorporation of cisterns in the design to address stormwater runoff and street tree designs to improve the tree canopy and shade along the project. These waivers to lot coverage landscaping and open space were expected as part of the planned development application, given the constraints of the development regulations for infill development. This slide covers the maximum impervious surface area waiver. The code requires a maximum of 85%. The applicant is providing 97%. Therefore, they are requesting a 12% waiver. Again, consideration is necessary for urban infill projects. Cisterns are designed into the project to accommodate stormwater discharge. The city's stormwater engineer had also reviewed and approved of the site plan. And in addition to that, the city stormwater engineer did make note that all projects are required to maintain at minimum the same discharge rate and volume volume for discharge, and it must also meet the criteria for the South Florida Water Management District. And therefore, staff does not have any concerns with the waiver to the impervious surface area. For landscape buffers pursuant to section 94443D, any multifamily residential use must provide a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer adjacent to a public thoroughfare. The application, the applicant is seeking an exception for this. In a nutshell, the project will provide trees to meet the intent of the required perimeter buffer. They will be distributed throughout the entire buffer, but that would, as opposed to the required amount for each buffer. The required buffers along the street frontages would also be inappropriate, given the context of the redevelopment and surrounding area. You know, the emphasis is on, you know, demonstrating new, the concepts of new urbanism. Providing the required buffer would be counterintuitive to the concepts of new urbanism. And the project's street design will provide tree canopy along the existing and sidewalk network, which would be a public benefit. The last waiver request is for the proposed signage. The applicant has provided information that they will be complying with the wall signage requirements of the underlying general zoning, general commercial zoning district. However, two additional signs, an identification sign, as well as a multi-sided marquee sign, which exceeds the number of allowable signs per building as the divagal requirements for the El Flabego building will be provided. Staff does not have any objections. The sign is unique, and it will help identify the project as a mixed-use and cultural arts project. The design is reminiscent of the Carefree Theater Building, the old Carefree Theater Building, and it also enhances the attractiveness of the project. So therefore, staff does not have any issues with the signed waiver. In terms of product review, the project has been reviewed by the Plans and Plots Review Committee back on June 12th of 2019. And the PPRC has deemed the plans technically sufficient to move forward to the public hearing stage. The project had also received traffic and currency approval from Palm Beach County Traffic Division back on September 27th of last year. And the school district of Palm Beach County had also issued school concurrency approval on June 8th. In terms of public notice, sign postings were put on the site 15 days, at least 15 days prior to the first public hearing or tonight's meeting. Mailers were also sent out to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, and an advertisement was placed in the Palm Beach Post. Based on staff's findings and analysis, staff is recommending approval of Planning Board Case Number 1712C with conditions as staff has found the project to comply with the city's comprehensive plan, the rezoning standards and the site design qualitative development standards of our zoning code. The conditions of approval are outlined in, on pages two through four of the staff report. There has been a couple of minor changes to the conditions since the report had been released. The first one is condition number one. Staff is tweaking the language to read prior to city commission. As the applicant had noted that some of these are conditions as part of condition number one are being addressed, and some of them aren't as big and can be easily addressed. So therefore, the applicant has requested that it be dealt with prior to city commission and not prior to the scheduling of city commission. Condition number one C, after speaking to the city's stormwater engineer, the condition had been modified and a new condition, which is condition number 16, has been added. So it's a modified version of one C, and that is prior to engineering permit approval. The engineering plans shall show all vehicular access points to the public right-of-way lower than back of sidewalk by at least 0.1 feet to ensure all onsite stormwater runoff is collected in, in the onsite drainage system and flow through the outfall discharge pipes if the runoff is not disposed of onsite. And that concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you. Any questions of staff? Peter?
Linda, that's a small typo. I guess signage becomes a 12th waiver? You got 11 as buffer, and then 11 repeats itself for signage.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the other question I had for you was the letter we received regarding the school capacity contribution. Should that be a condition of approval?
It is a recommendation. At this point, we're leaving it up, staff is leaving it up to work it out between the applicant and the school board. It is highly encouraged, but at this point in time, staff is not comfortable making it a condition of approval.
Any other questions? Scott?
Thank you. Linda, you know, in the presentation, you mentioned, besides the moving back of, you mentioned a couple of things regarding the, the El Cordova building and the concerns about the, you know, the narrow, the shallowness of that property and the back, well, I'm going to call the back, if we're calling Dixie Highway the front, the back abutting the, the properties behind it. And so one of those things, one of those, you know, ways you were addressing that concern, dealt with, you know, taking care of the, moving back the end units on the top floor, which I saw was a condition. That is, that is one of the proposed conditions for the, in the staff report. The other thing you talked about, though, was the concern about the eight-foot wall and the, and the landscaping that would accompany that, providing us an adequate buffer. If I understood your report correctly, I don't see anything regarding that being made a, one of the recommended conditions for approval. Should there be something that specifies, you know, anything about that in the, you know, in the conditions for approval? Or if not, could you maybe tell me, tell us why not?
I believe that those are, as heard of, the conditions of approval, the step back, the building step back is conditioned.
No, that is, yes, that I saw. But I didn't see anything else in there about, I didn't see anything in there about anything involving the wall or about the, and maybe if I missed it, please do correct me, or about the, specifically about the landscaping for the buffer alongside that wall.
Because these are actually provided in the plans. They are proposed, and they are expected that if the project is approved, that it will be built according to plans. So if the applicant is showing the eight-foot-high wall along the buffer, then we expect to see that constructed. It is critical. I mean, if, if you, if it's comfort to the board, we can add that as a condition. But it is depicted in the plans.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I guess, what I, the way I took, what I took from your presentation, though, was there was a, maybe I misunderstood. I thought there was a question or a possible question that staff had about whether or not the eight-foot wall as proposed in the plan with the proposed landscaping would be sufficient to, to provide the necessary buffer between this property and the adjacent property or not. And I just wanted to know, I mean, is that right? Do I have that right?
Well, basically, I believe that it is critical, and the way that it's depicted in the plans would be adequate, but we don't expect the, the type of tree species to change. Because it is a narrow buffer, it's only five foot wide, we want to be able to make sure that the buffer can accommodate the wall. We were given no specifications on what type of concrete wall they were utilizing, whether it was panel or if footers were going to be installed as part of the wall and, and the type of tree species. And the fact that there is a sub-level underground parking, we wanted to make sure that, that it was all feasible. It is a critical component of the mitigation measure to the building height. So in that, because of that, we, staff would like to see the construction drawings or the sectional drawings as part of the submittal prior to city commission.
So then, could we, or should we make that an additional condition of approval?
The eight-foot-high wall?
Here tonight? The, or the submittal of those plans with specifications to staff prior to hearing, prior to the hearing city commission? Because you, what I'm understanding you saying is that you don't know, you don't have any specifics about what the type of wall is, what the type of species of, of plant is in. what the type of seeds of, of plant is envisioned to go along with that eight-foot wall, but that you think it would be, what I'm hearing is that it would be important for you to know those specifics or to make sure that it will serve as an adequate barrier or buffer to the other adjacent, to the adjacent property.
Based on staff's.
Am I right? Or maybe I'm.
Based on staff's review of the plans, based on the landscape plan, you know, the type of material, plant material that's provided within the buffer and the eight-foot-high wall on, in plan is adequate. Staff believes it is adequate. I just want to see the construction drawings to make sure that, you know, when it comes time to the implementation, if the project gets approved, that it could all work out. It's all feasible and everything can fit within that five-foot-wide buffer. So that is the purpose of condition number 1B.
Oh, I, I see, I missed 1B. I apologize. Thank you.
Okay, it's okay.
All right, any other questions of staff? Peter?
And I have to, I have to compliment the staff in recognizing that the setback of that fourth floor, it's a critical element in terms of transitioning the building and respecting historical residences nearby. And I compliment the staff for picking that up.
That's where you nod and say, "Thank you." She's like, "Look at you." Like, "What, what is this man saying to me?" Any other questions of staff? And if not, then I believe we're going to have some public comments. So Mr. Roach, I think, has a strategy for the best way to move forward. And Mr. Roach, if you'll bring the people in, the first ones you want to bring in?
Yeah, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I think we'd like to start with, there's approximately 12-plus people here at City Hall. And then there's a handful of people virtually on Zoom. And then we'll follow up with the voicemails and emails and so forth. We'll start one at a time. Just give me one second to get them situated.
Mr. Roach, is there an opportunity to swear everyone in at once or we'll do it individually?
I think you'll have to do it individually.
No problem at all. Can I ask first, staff to stop the screen share then, so we can see everyone better? I appreciate it. Thank you so much. You raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give, this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Please proceed.
My name is Mary Clary Iardini. My home will be greatly impacted with this proposed development. I have owned my home at 293 Barcelona, which is just on the corner of Olive and Barcelona, for the majority of my life, for 54 years. We purchased it in 1966. I raised my five children in this peaceful residential neighborhood. And now, as a retired nurse, I am, I am retired, along with my 86-year-old disabled husband. Since the developers put up pictures of the Carefree, I just wanted to make a little comparison to what the Carefree Theater was in 1966, when we moved into El Cid. It was in operation. It included a theater, a bowling alley, and a small restaurant. The activities of the Carefree did not interfere with our peaceful, family-oriented residential neighborhood, since it was only occasionally well-attended, and that was only on the weekends. Now, the majority of the people that did attend were from our city and our neighborhood. There was very little activity Monday through Fridays, since most of the activities were geared for working-class people and their families. Parking and traffic was not a big issue then, since a lot of people carpool as a family or bowling leagues, they traveled together in a van. Actually, Ann Norton was a resident at that time. She lived in what is now the Ann Norton Sculpture Garden, and she would enjoy each evening a stroll down our peaceful Barcelona Drive with her two dogs and companion. However, I realize times have changed, but El Cid neighborhood has not changed. We remain a family-oriented neighborhood with young children and retirees as myself. I believe what the developers are proposing is we'll totally change our family-oriented residential neighborhood by overwhelming our streets and neighborhood with traffic flowing in and out from all over the country, the county, seven days a week and late into the nights. Traffic and parking on Barcelona is already a problem with so many service vehicles on a daily basis, such as landscapers, pool maintenance, pest control, and on and on and on, along with the events at Ann Norton Sculpture Garden.
Ma'am, you can conclude your remarks. Your three minutes are up.
And so that's, and I just want to say, I believe that the proposal, I strongly oppose the proposal as it is now presented.
Thank you so much. Hello? Mr. Roach, this lady will have five minutes.
Okay, and she's also going to share her screen, so just one sec.
May I swear her hand first, please? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So anything on the screen, they can see. So just open up whatever you want.
Thank you. I'll tell you what, some of the things on the screen are for other people coming in. So my comments, I don't need the screen for, but maybe later on.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Ms. Roach, there we go. Thank you. All right. And this will be five minutes, Mr. Roach. Go ahead and proceed, Ms. Stroud.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Nancy Stroud. I'm representing the El Cid Historic Neighborhood Association this evening. I want to summarize some issues of major importance, and there are a number of representatives from the association who will be speaking to some of these. But let me first say that the major issue here is the mass of the buildings and their effect, that effect on the historic neighborhood. I think it's interesting to note that both in the staff report and in the justification, it is not made clear that this project is building out at the maximum floor area ratio and the maximum density allowed under the comprehensive plan. The scope and scale of this project is, is critical. Because the homeowners association does not oppose mixed use, does not oppose the uses here, would like to see redevelopment of the corridor, but the size of this project is what is the issue. And that size and the effects on the neighborhood have not been mitigated. The kinds of things that should be done better than they are under this PT is to have better buffering. The, the last-minute change that has been proposed to bring back upper floors by five feet on El Cordova and seven feet on El Flamingo is so minimal. It is barely the distance, five feet's barely the distance we're supposed to socially distance from one another during COVID. So we don't think that really is an adequate change. The height of the buildings are described as four feet, I mean, sorry, four stories. But you can't really look at the stories. You need to look at the actual number of feet. And the feet of these buildings tower over the single-family residential, historic residential neighborhood to the east. It also towers over the adjacent properties, the Magnolia Residential. It will be the tallest and most intense project along South Dixie, and certainly not like the other kind of redevelopment that is occurring along the corridor. So the impacts on the narrow residential historic streets from parking and cut-through traffic is also going to be substantial. And we have a traffic expert to explain how the traffic impact study of the developer has not really addressed that. The project does not respect the ULI Dixie Corridor Plan. That Dixie Corridor Plan said that rezoning was not necessary, and that's what they're asking you to do here. And that the kind of scale of development should be similar to Magnolia, which is not the scale that's being proposed here. There's been no meaningful attempt by the developer to negotiate with the neighborhood. PTs are flexible devices, and they are meant to give more flexibility to the developer in return for mitigation and public benefits. And that second part just really hasn't been realized here. Good urbanist design respects existing established neighborhoods, especially historic neighborhoods. And this is in the middle of three historic neighborhoods, and builds adequate transitions. This project simply does not do that. And that's what we're asking for. We're asking for better transitions in this project. And we think because the, the planning board here has a special requirement under the code to approve this project, approve the lot waiver in particular, before the commission can finally approve it, that you hold the power of negotiating that adequate transition in your hands. And we're asking you to do that, to give us more time to have meaningful conversations for meaningful transitions. And so that is my basic message. I think I have three seconds.
I think you're keeping good time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your concerns and your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Stroud. Appreciate your comments.
Is I seeing myself in here?
Yep, you're right there.
You just need to state your name and be sworn in.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, and this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and let us hear your comments.
Hi, my name is Robert McClary. I live at 321 Valencia on the 300 block of El Cid. I live in the second house from, from Dixie Highway. And I oppose this as well. I've kind of followed this for probably about the past three or four years. I've attended a board meeting. I went to the PR presentation at PBAU. And I've recently received a letter from Mr. Cohen himself. I have some serious concerns with the misinformation that's being disseminated at all of these. On a particular, I'd like to circle back to the presentation that was given at PBAU and the depictions and aerial views that have been presented to us. I also attended the April 2018 Planning and Board Meeting where this was soundly rejected. And I'd like to thank everybody for doing that and appreciate, and I hope you do as well today. I just wanted to give a little perspective. At that PBAU presentation with Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Schmidt, it took a little coercion to get them to admit that the renderings, renderings, aerial views were not to scale. I live next door to the house that is furthest west on the 300 block, or one house from, from Dixie Highway. And my neighbor is a wonderful neighbor, and they live in a one-story house. I just wanted to show a picture of myself standing next to that house. I'm, I'm standing 17 feet from the house, which is what the, one of the waivers is requesting to build. And I think that's inadequate. Wanted to show you another quick picture here. This is a picture of me standing 17 feet away from a 70-foot commercial building. As you can see, it's kind of dark because there's no sunlight. I think my neighborhood can be prepared to not see any sun if you allow this to be built. I hate to be, I think this too is very basic form, but as I did in my last presentation, I'm going to show you something to scale. This is my neighbor's house to scale. This is a one-story house, the house I was standing in front of. This represents 17 feet. This is the setback waiver that's being requested, to my understanding, from 97 feet. In the earlier presentation, it was something at 80 feet. And then this is to scale what's being built. Okay, I, I request that everybody on the planning board pretend this is your house. This is your house, and the developer is going to put this next to you. By the way, the top floor will be a pool where everybody can look into your backyard. In three years, my house will be 100 years old. I've had the joy of seeing the sun from the west. That's going to disappear if you allow this. El Cid is a premier, an exquisite, a wonderful.
If you can conclude your remarks, or your three minutes are up. Just conclude your remarks. Thank you.
It's going to ruin it. I would beg that you, once again, reject all of these variances and let the developer build what he should. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just need to state your name, raise your hand, and then be sworn in.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, and this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Jonathan Lowe. I'm a 27-year resident of West Palm Beach and of the El Cid neighborhood. And I got to tell you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, I'm tired of standing up in front of you and talking about this project. It's been four years. And listening to Mr. Cohen's representatives, one would think that they have bent over backwards to meet the concerns of the neighborhood. And to that proposition, I would ask you, if that were the case, why are so many of us here tonight? Why have so many people signed a petition? Why have so many people requested meetings with you? Why have so many people sent emails? And the answer, as I'm sure you know, is because we do not think Mr. Cohen has made any meaningful effort to address our concerns as a neighborhood. And specifically, there are several. First of all, the mass and scale of the project itself and the impact it will have, not just on the homes in the 300 block, but on the whole neighborhood. Secondly, there is concern about the impact of parking and traffic. You will hear in greater detail about some of our concerns about Mr. Cohen's traffic study, but suffice it to say that it would appear to be based on an assumption that all traffic for the Carefree Development will come from South Dixie, not from Flagler or South Olive, which seems like a inadequate assumption. Finally, with regard to the, the water, the stormwater issues, I thought that Mr. Schmidt's response was rather facile. The fact that there is a development two blocks to the south and one block east does not necessarily address the concerns that we have right now, even today, where we had yet another king tide, where Flagler is flooding ever more regularly. And the impact of this development on that potential needs to be addressed. In sum, I am asking, as my other colleagues have done, that you seriously consider the impact of this project as currently designed on this neighborhood and that you demand, request, that the developer reconsider and make some real compromises that address the concerns of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Say your name and then raise your hand to be sworn in.
Dr. London Nasser.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give, and this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Before I begin my prepared statement, I want to comment on the propaganda I just received this morning from the developer. He touts his nostrandition as an example of how much he has compromised his original monstrosity to something that should be more palatable to us. This statement is so disingenuous. The key here is not how much it has been scaled back. The context is really how huge it is when compared to existing code. He is still asking for 11 variances and just under a 70% increase in density. Simply because you have gone for asking for the entire galaxy to now ask for the moon and the sun doesn't make your request reasonable. I have owned the property at 2007 South Olive since the very early 90s. I'm here to tell you that the Carefree Theater was a nightmare. The traffic was terrible as people would cruise the neighborhood for parking. Most of the time, someone would park on the swale, not right next to my driveway, making it difficult for me to pull into and out of my drive. I had to maneuver my car around them so as not to hit them. Along the traffic came the incessant car horns, door slamming and yelling late into the night. Also, there was a lot of garbage left on the street and sidewalk. It was simply awful that people would just dump their empty bottles, break bottles, and throw food and cigarette butts right into the street in front of my home and many others. What strikes me as so unfair is that this project as currently proposed is so out of step with the surrounding area that it would require radical alteration to current code. That fact alone demonstrates that this project as presented is simply too big for the area. I see that the plans call for rooftop garden and pool facing east. That reminds me of the time when I asked for permission to put a small two-by-two window on the second floor facing south. I was denied that small request because I would then be looking down on my next-door neighbor. I even went for a variance that was denied. Yet this project calls for a six-floor roof garden, which permits people to look down on several blocks of neighbors. How fair is that? We in El Cid abide by the rules and regulations for our historic neighborhood and the privacy of our neighbors. Yet this project would be a major assault on those values for the profit of this developer. It would be the epitome of our government saying, "Do as I say, not as I do." Please be fair and consistent and require this project to comply with the current density regulations. At the end of the day, this project is centered around a movie theater. Why is that concept entitled to special treatment at our expense?
Thank you. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name.
My name's Douglas Taylor and I live at 317 Cordova Road. I am three houses away from one of the proposed projects. I'd just like to add my support to what everybody else has said tonight already. I don't want to repeat it, but simply the scope and scale of this project is insane. It is just stupid and it ruins the neighborhood. And you should be ashamed to even be taking something up with this scope without having reviewed it properly and getting it down to shift the neighborhood. It's really shocking. I've only lived in the neighborhood five years and I know a lot of people. I do not know one person in the neighborhood that supports this project, not one. And when you tell me there are 36 letters that support this project, I don't believe you. I don't think any of those letters come from anybody that lives in the neighborhood. So, again, all I'd say is this project is totally inappropriate for the neighborhood and it ruins it. It's not a positive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Manz is right there on the side.
All right.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Nancy Pullum. I am a resident of over three decades in El Cid and have a lot of history with the city. I have a lot to say in little time, so I'm going to try to be productive and brief and not repeat. I have not heard a single person say that they oppose the development of this site. People are happy to think that the site will be developed. However, what we have here is not what, it's how. There's been a lot of effort over time in this neighborhood and in all the historic neighborhoods in the city. I sat on a task force for over two years, reworking the historic guidelines and the code for these neighborhoods to preserve and make appropriate size, scale, and mass, et cetera. And that was to protect the historic neighborhoods. And now we have this. So let me just say, first of all, we, I get what Mr. Cohen wants, but saying it's very disingenuous, I will tell you, to stand up and say, "What good people are we that we've reduced all this?" They had to reduce it because they couldn't get it passed. It was against the code. It was against the law. So they don't get rewarded for doing something they should have never put forth to start with. That's what drew out this process all these years. And I think I'm reminded of my mother, who would be famous for saying to you, "So what happened?" And you gave her an answer and then she looked at me and she said, "Okay, now what really happened?" Because she was being told what I wanted her to hear to soften the blow and she could shoot straight through that. Yes, ULI did a study. Yes, they talked about Magnolia Port and the residences at Antique Row. And they talked about the scale of those. They didn't say build those plus how many feet more. Their recommendations were no need for zoning and that those were appropriate scale for the corridor, for projects backing up to residential neighborhoods. The other thing is, across the residential district, the compromise, the conditions, the project. We talk about 8111. Well, I know about 81, I mean 3111. I know about that project. Francis Greenberger of Time Equity started with five 15-floor high rises on Dixie. And his response when it was all over, there was a genuine compromise. He said, "I really thank the neighborhoods because we have a better project and a more appropriate one. And from my perspective, I didn't understand that." Kudos to Francis Greenberger from New York, who owns Time Equity.
If you could conclude your remarks, your time is up.
Well, I can, because I got more stuff to say, but I'm.
I understand. A lot of people are waiting to speak.
Yes. So the other thing was the residences at Antique Row. They agreed to step down. And both, and none of the projects that have been cited share a property line with the single-family residents. Residents at Antique Row, Magnolia Port, all are buffered by Olive. They agreed to step down on the Olive side where it adjoins the historic neighborhood.
Mr. Coleman, thank you. Thank you for your time. I really have to end this here. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Let the next speaker come forward. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do. My name is Kevin Lawler. I live at 281 Flamingo Drive, West Palm Beach. And I'm also a co-Vice President of the El Cid Historic Neighborhood. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to join the voices of concern of my El Cid neighbors. I'm going to not waste your time and repeat number of things you'll hear this evening and focus on one primary issue. That issue is the protection of our historic neighborhood. COP Plan, COP Plan 2.5 says that the city will protect the neighborhoods adjoining US-1 as notably conspicuous absent from any discussion on, on how this project complies with the COP Plan. El Cid is, is one of those historic neighborhoods on US-1. The Development Code. Why bother with the Development Code when you can take 11 waivers and eviscerate all the protections that are customarily associated with the zoning, setbacks, lot coverage, buffers, and et cetera? The applicant in this case has proposed no meaningful mitigation measures for these 11 waivers, yet substantially wants to take those waivers and, as I said, gut the basic zoning protections we have in the city. The 11 zoning waivers are not minor, as the applicant suggested in their report. 11 waivers would put it in the 10th decile of waiver approvals by the city. But more importantly, five of those waivers involve a reduction in code requirements of over 75%. And another three of those involve a code reduction of over 50%. The only meaningful mitigation the applicant suggests is their prior proposal at 2.5 FAR. We know that's a fantasy, a fiction, because it was never legally viable. So thus, I move on to the final issue, which is staff recommendations. The staff have 15 months, six resubmissions, and we get an anemic, inconsequential set of conditions associated with this. I'm going to take the rest of my time here and give you 10 more conditions I'd like the planning board to consider as part of this project. Number one, step back the third and the fourth floors of this building an additional 10 feet. Number two, increase the rear landscaping from five, or buffer from five feet to eight feet. As John noted, five feet distance doesn't even meet a COVID distancing requirement. Number three, provide noise suppression and screening.
Mr. Lawler, your time is up. If you can conclude your remarks.
All right, I'm going to quickly, I've submitted some written testimony. There are seven more of these. These are all conditions I think that would be required to get our neighborhood to support this. The two that I'd just like a second to address. There's a substantial issue with regarding an aquifer in this block. I think it's a condition of approval that they need to do the requisite engineering studies to figure out how to mitigate or protect that aquifer. And lastly, I would urge the planning commission to have a condition that prohibited the closure of either Flamingo, Barcelona, or Cordova during construction or during any special events.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
So the camera's there. Mr. Manz, the chair.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Please state your name.
Nina Corning. I do not live in El Cid. And actually, I wasn't expecting to be here today. I decided to speak because I have viewed El Cid as a gem, as a gem for West Palm Beach, as a gem for the county, and as a place historically that has created a special feeling within the city. And I find it to be disheartening to see such a monster. And I'm going to call it the El Cid Godzilla, because I think it's appropriate. To me, staff try to make some accommodations, but it's just a haircut. It's a haircut on top of Godzilla. This is towering over your historic neighborhood. And they're saying, just because a couple of people have a garage apartment, it's just to have this monster above them. If you look at City Place, for example, and what was built there, you're coming down a hill. When you're coming down that hill, you are starting in with the little townhouses as you're having a completely different perspective. And as the building height goes up and up and up. And then you have Pedrel. You have all of the measures that you have taken in order to add landscaping there in order to make the buffer for the other side. This has none of that. It just towers over one of the most valuable neighborhoods in West Palm Beach. What are you thinking? For me to go and stand here, even though I don't live in El Cid, I love that neighborhood. I view that neighborhood as a gem. You need to send staff back to the drawing board. I understand the developers come in. And I've been in a position just like you. I've sat on the board. I've had to say no many, many times. And it's hard because, you know, they come in and they ask for the heavens. They ask for the heavens and then they come in and make you feel like, "Oh, I have given you something back. I've made some accommodations. Here's a little haircut. And here's another little haircut." And you feel like, hmm, maybe I should say, "Okay, it's okay now." But it isn't. It isn't okay. This is not, you are talking about 1.8 acres, what should fit five acres. You're talking about an immense size and intensity. You're talking about totally inadequate landscaping and buffers. You're talking about giving flood waivers while we have king tides. This is something that shouldn't be done, period, not at this time and age. You're talking a traffic that's going to spill into areas that can't take it.
If you can conclude your remarks, your three minutes.
Please. And, and ask planning and the planning staff to go back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Carrigan, we have one more.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding are truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is No Maclary. I live on the 300 block of Valencia Road. I am also a treasurer for the El Cid Homeowners Association. I'd like to pick up where Kevin left off in some of the concessions that we would like planning to also include as conditions for this project. These conditions are also part of just what everyone has said before today is that there's been no outreach to the neighborhood. There's no reason for 11 waivers to be requested without any conditions for our neighborhood. In addition to the petitions of 89 names, which we have submitted, I'd like to pick up with the list of what Kevin wanted to provide to you. We would like to provide, or staff should also ask for the applicant to provide noise suppression, screening from the rooftop amenity deck from the El Flamingo Building, including adhering to noise emission standards for special events, not in excess of 65 dBA, and no noise emissions from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM. We would also like to require noise suppression program for the below-grade garage pumps and fans. Requirement for subsurface engineering, groundwater evaluation, and mitigation program for any adverse impacts to or from the historic aquifer. Requires security bond during construction for the protection of the historic homes adversely affected by the construction vibrations. Require on-property evening and nighttime onsite security personnel. Require parking personnel to actively direct exiting traffic from heading eastward into the neighborhood during peak hours. And also limit special events to no more than 100 attendees, 100, which is including attendees and support personnel. Again, I'd like to just echo what everyone has said this evening is that we do not oppose development of the Carefree Site. We would like to propose that the Carefree Site be under construction within its current zoning and permitted boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I believe that concludes in-person comments. So we'll transition to those who are going to be virtual via Zoom.
Okay.
First person will be Ms. Karen Steele.
And this lady will get five minutes.
Okay, let me bring her in just one second. Okay, she's in. She'll just need to unmute and turn on her video. There we go.
All right. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman and Planning Board members. My name is Karen Steele. I live at 267 Barcelona Road. I'm the president of the El Cid Historic Neighborhood Association. And I'm here to talk about how the scale and intensity of this project physically and visually intrudes into our neighborhood and how that will affect the quality of life of our residents. I've lived in El Cid for 34 years in a historic home built in 1925. Having a historic home is a labor of love. And in the three-plus decades that I've lived there, my husband and I have invested considerable time and dollars in restoring and maintaining our home. We have gratefully watched our neighbors do the very same. From the 100 years since the founding of El Cid, our community evolved from its heyday with new stunning Meisner-style homes for many of West Palm's business leaders and professionals of the era, to historic homes sorely in the in need of updating in the 70s and 80s, to many beautifully restored homes today. I've been acted in the community since we arrived, including a previous term on the board. This term, I've been on the board since the Carefree was first proposed in 2016 and have closely followed the Carefree submissions. Professionally, I've spent my career in marketing, New York, Philadelphia and Florida, mostly national and international employers and clients. I've reviewed the Carefree's marketing materials and my professional opinion is that they are slick. Nicely done, but very misleading, just as was tonight's presentation. They use the headline in many of their community mailouts, "Project concessions after community input." They claim tonight that they've done 13 meetings. My count is three public meetings. We've had some personal meetings, but three public meetings. They repeatedly cited that after community input, they reduced the building's height from 97 feet to 71.8 feet. I think you know now that that the 97 feet was a no-go. It didn't it didn't ever get public hearing. It was withdrawn. It was first rejected by the West Palm Planning Department and it was withdrawn. That is not a fair comparison. What it should be compared compared to is the 78-feet-tall building that was proposed a couple of years ago now reduced to 71.8 feet. They lopped off a whole big 6.2 feet off the rooftop pool. The the marketing materials lists 20 bullets of what they decreased or eliminated based on a project to be built on 1 point acres total, directly adjacent to the one-story homes in a 100-year historic district. I want to emphasize is that after multiple meetings with the Carefree team, each return application was a deja vu. A tweak or two, but no acceptable measures on how to protect our neighborhood from compounding the problems we are already experiencing, problems that have already been mentioned over time this last couple of hours. There is no plan for noise abatement from the running of equipment in the underground garage for ventilation and water removal or the noise that will come with the rooftop pool or recreation area. This has been mentioned. Cut through traffic has been mentioned. Parking on our narrow streets. The first public meeting was organized in June 2016 at the Presbyterian Church. Community members flotally rejected their 97-foot proposal. That, of course, was not that was not accepted by the planning department. The meetings that followed, we emphasized all of the issues that we're talking about today. The Carefree architect, John Smith, also did a separate presentation for the board and developer Charles Cohen came to the board. We've talked to them. We have given our input. We have asked over and over to please include more mitigations to our historic neighborhood. In response, we got a bull belt on Barcelona Road. Barcelona Road is one of the narrowest streets in the community. They're eggs, they say that's going to cause the traffic to exit north. There was another, there was another discrepancy that I noticed. There was in 2018, they they asked for nine waivers. For 2019, they asked for nine waivers.
If you could please conclude your remarks, your five minutes are up.
Okay, then they went to 10 eight waivers and now 11 waivers. And tonight it sounded like 12 waivers. I don't understand it. These repeat, this repeated presentation of an oversized plan seems like a see no neighbors, hear no abers communication style. I find it inconscionable and extremely tiring.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. We appreciate your comments.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the next speaker will be Amanda Skyer. Just one second. Okay.
You swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Please proceed. State your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Skyer. I reside at 234 Pershing Way. I'm a local expert in historic preservation and have resided in El Cid since 2012. I have a historic, I have a master's degree in historic preservation and I have served as the executive director of the Preservation Foundation of Palm Beach since 2016. I'm the senior-most member of the city's Historic Preservation Board and I've served as its chair since 2016. I know what it's like to be in your seat and I appreciate everything you do and the time that you volunteer to help guide development in our city. The last time I addressed this board was when a new zoning district was proposed to benefit this project. At the time, the Carefree redevelopment project was requesting an FAR of 2.5, grossly exceeding the maximum FAR of 1.5. This evening's request for 11 zoning waivers is a clear indication that the project continues to disregard the scale of the surrounding built environment. The justification statement for this planned development cites the Urban Land Institute study of the Dixie Corridor. The ULI study characterizes most of the commercial buildings along Dixie Highway as low-scale, one and two stories. Furthermore, the study specifically notes the significant number of historic neighborhoods that flank the corridor and states that they are, quote, "an important part of the planning context." It's very important that you understand the unique surroundings of this specific site as I believe you would be hard-pressed to find a similar situation anywhere else in the city. This interactive map this interactive map that was created by the city's historic planning staff indicates the location of historic buildings within the city. Here we have the project site. And immediately to the east and the south is the El Cid Historic District, which was locally designated in 1993 and added to the National Register of Historic Places in 1995. Above is the Mango Promenade Historic District designated locally in 1995 and added to the National Register of Historic Places in 1999. You'll also note that these are commercial buildings that are included within the historic district and located on the west side of Dixie Highway. This historic area of West Palm Beach has a unique sense of place that is treasured by its residents and the larger community. Inappropriate commercial development like the Carefree redevelopment project as proposed will erode the integrity.
Sky, if you could please conclude your remarks, your three minutes are up.
Now, will it will erode, this project will erode the integrity as proposed of El Cid and Mango Promenade Historic Districts.
Thank you so much.
That has attempted to mitigate some of the negative impacts of this project, but it's simply not enough. Please ask the developer to go back and come back to you with a design that is more compatible with the historic character of this area.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. The next person will be Morris Panner. Just one second. Okay, they'll just need to unmute. There we go.
Hi.
Okay, who's who's going to be speaking tonight? Or you all can be sworn in. That's fine. Everyone who plans to.
Everybody raise your.
Right hand. I'm pleased. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
We do.
All right, please state your names for the record and then proceed.
My name is Nancy Giardini Panner. This is my oldest child, Michaelina Panner. This is my husband, Morris Panner. This is my daughter, Joey Panner, and my daughter, NeNe Panner, and my son, David Panner, who is squirreled away in his room but is on his way. So we'll introduce him.
Okay.
And so so we own 312 Barcelona Road. We, our house is going to be, you know, we would incorporate by reference everything everyone has said so far this evening. But what we want you to know and what we want you to see here is we are real people who will live in the shadow and in the noise and in the dirt and in the trash and in the shadow of this building. And we're not asking that the the Carefree site not be developed. My husband and I were wonderful and loving Carefree participants back in the 1980s. We loved the place. When we bought our property at 312 Barcelona, we thought we want to be part of the cultural redevelopment of this site, but not to the extent that it that it destroys the enjoyment of our own property. We expect that this committee will hold the developers to the same the same requirements that they held us to. When we bought our property, it was probably and still is the cheapest thing ever sold in El Cid because it was the only thing we could afford. And we paid a lot of money to lovingly restore our 1926 historic residence. And we expect that this committee will hold any other property owner to the same standard that you held us, to comply with the setbacks, comply with the noise requirements, to ensure that your neighbors don't fall into a sinkhole, which we are really concerned about. And by the way, nothing we've heard tonight convinces us that that's not going to happen. So we, the environmental considerations, everything we did and we as the little guy had to spend money on, we're asking you to hold this developer to that same standard, to not let him overrun the private and quiet enjoyment of our own property for the sake of commercial greed. Honey, anything else?
No, sweetheart. You said it perfectly.
Thank you. Bye to the family. Who's next?
Okay, the next person is going to be Walt Keller. Turn video on if he hasn't.
Mr. Keller, we need you to activate your camera, please. That's a requirement.
Okay.
Your testimony.
Right hand.
There you go. Okay. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Walter Keller. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of Florida. I'm also a certified planner, an American Institute certified planner. I have more than a 40-year history, professional history, either being a town planner or as towns, traffic engineer, working for county, state and international interest, doing traffic and city planning. Especially always has been the mixture of land use and transportation. I've served on the TRB Land Use and Transportation Committee for a couple of years. I did a small study of this site and they're going to advance the pictures for me. If you could turn to the next page. Of the, it's surprising to me that while this study meets the requirements of Palm Beach County traffic and currency, the traffic study that was submitted is very deficient because it totally ignores impacts to the El Cid Historic Neighborhood area. I mean, it's unbelievable to me that somebody would do a traffic study and say 40% of the traffic's coming from the north on Dixie Highway and 60% is coming from the south on Dixie Highway. That just doesn't make sense. I mean, it's common sense. So if you could turn to the next page, please. We wanted to figure out, does this make any sense? So what I did is I went on Google Maps and said, found a location in South Palm Beach and said, get me to the north driveway of the El Flamingo Building. So it gave me three choices. I could use Flagler Drive, I could use Olive Avenue, or I could use US one. Well, it turns out Olive Avenue is the fastest way and the shortest way. If you take Dixie Highway, you get there in about the same amount of time, but you gotta drive a little farther. Or, you know, if you like the lake view, you can drive along the beautiful Flagler Drive and really enjoy your view before you come into the neighborhood. The next picture shows another location from the north in Palm Beach. And in this instance, it shows the best direct way to the site is Flagler Drive down to the Norton Gallery Drives down Olive Avenue into the site. So the traffic study just totally ignores this. The other thing in the traffic study that's done very strangely is they assume that the capacity of this road you're looking in this picture is 15,000 cars per day. Now, can you imagine 15,000 cars a day trying to get through on this road? The 15,000 cars per day is for an arterial road that's too lane, not for a little local street like this. The capacity on local street might only be somewhere in the order of 1,000. Trip generation analysis was done. I think the applicant's work on the weekday type thing is generally reasonable, except that he took passerby trips off, which the county lets you do for concurrency. But guess what? Those trips are still going to be in the neighborhood.
Mr. Keller, if you could conclude your remarks, your three minutes are up.
I guess in summary, the parking also showed that it wasn't adequate. And I think the thing is that the traffic study and parking work totally ignores the impacts to the El Cid Historic Neighborhood. There's a health and safety welfare consideration because the streets cannot handle the traffic.
Thank you, sir.
20% of the traffic will come through that neighborhood to get to this site.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Roach, who's next?
So the next person will be Lisa King. Just one second.
Sure.
Okay, Ms. King, you're in. You'll just need to turn on your video microphone.
And can you, Mr. Roach, stop the screen share so we can see everyone better?
Yeah, just one second.
Sure.
I don't know if Ms. King is there. She still shows her muted.
I don't see her on our screen unless she's with Verdict Construction.
Yeah, she is, correct.
Okay, we can, I can ask.
Bring in the next one. Bring in the next one if you want.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and proceed with the next one and then we'll come back to her.
Okay, the next one will be Jane Jones. Okay, she should be in. She'll just need to turn on video and audio.
Thank you.
Uh, there you go, Ms. Jones, if you would please raise your right hand. You're both gonna testify. Uh, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Okay, and if you could both state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Jane Jones. I live at two sixty-six Flamingo Drive, and my husband Leonard Nero is going to be speaking.
All right, thank you.
My name is Leonard Nero. I live at two sixty-six Flamingo Drive also. I have submitted written and specific, um, comments already. Uh, one staff out of the seventeen acknowledged, um, and I think that's telling. Clearly, this project is not in the public interest as proposed. It is not supported by its neighbors or the, or the neighborhood. Heightened public concern legally removes it from the apparent public interest. Planning staff and the commissioners seem to believe it is. Minor deviations and waivers are not uncommon in a project. Claiming deviations and waivers from that which planning and zoning flat out rejected as benefits is just plain corruption of the facts and truth. Without clear interest to the public of the immediate neighborhood, the local, the locale, and then, and then the city at large, it is clearly not in the public interest as defined in Florida law and must not, cannot be approved. And to the lady who said it was Godzilla, when I was growing up, it's a blivit, B-L-I-V-I-T. Some of you may know what that is, but it's the excessive amount of odious material in an insufficient container. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is the lady from Verdict Construction?
I still haven't got a response yet, so.
Okay, let's go with the next one then, please.
The next one will be James Malloy.
I'm here.
All right, I'm just waiting for, um, Mr. Roach, if you could reset the timer and then we'll get this witness sworn in. Do you swear or affirm, sir, the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is James Malloy and I live at two seventy-six Flamingo Drive in West Palm Beach. The overutilization of the carefree building site coupled with a massive proposed structure does not coexist in size or scale with other commercial buildings on South Dixie Highway. It's an intrusion into the city's historic neighborhoods, especially El Cid. I don't believe that the parking is adequate, especially on weekends when the proposed theater will see its lar- largest number of patrons, when restaurants on South Dixie are filled, and when apartment dwellers and condo residents are entertaining. In the past, residents of El Cid have had horrific problems with former carefree theater that included blocking driveways, cars parked on lawn, shortage of parking for their own guests. I would respectfully propose that the planning department recommend as a condition of approval that the city establish and enforce resident-only parking zones on Flamingo, Barcelona, and Cordova. I am concerned about the potential of serious noise problems and believe the developer, as part of his approach, should be required to keep noise pollution at a minimum. An acceptable decimal level should be set, noise mitigation technology installed to help counter noise from air conditioning units, large generators, garage exhaust fans, and excessive sound from outside balconies, as well as a large pool and entertainment desk, deck. I suspect that the noise emulating from this development will seriously affect the quality of life for a number of El Cid residents. It's my understanding that the site lies directly above an aquifer that needs to be protected from saltwater intrusion and pollution. The planning, planning board should require that the developers study the effects and consequences of pumping water from an underground garage and surface water into the city's storm drainage system. It's an interesting aside that a homeowner building a new home in the historic district have to dispose of all their surface water on their lot. Wouldn't it be nice if we had the developers follow the same re- same requirements, uh, as homeowners? El Cid is the most valuable historical area in our city, the crown jewel. The combined value of the two hundred and seventy-six homes exceeds a half a billion dollars, billion, in value. And this value helps fund the city substantially more than the carefree ever will. Look at the well-known historic districts around the country, Charleston, Savannah, Beacon Hill, Alexandria, and countless others. The planning departments in these cities would never approve such a large and disruptive development that's contiguous with our historic district. Property values will be affected in the negative if this project is approved, and likewise, the city offers. I thank you for all the work you've done, and I would like to see you continue working on it and help the residents of El Cid continue to be able to enjoy their property as we have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so Ms. King says she's having microphone issues, so she'll type in her comments and I'll read them later.
Okay, you said one more there then?
Yep, the next person will be Catherine Strickler.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can. Can we see you, though? Can you activate your camera? Use this icon, the lower left corner is a video camera icon. You just need to left-click it and you mute it yourself. Excuse me, there you are. Okay, wonderful, I was looking at the wrong screen. Will you raise your right hand? You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
Catherine Strickler. I purchased my home at three ten Valencia Road because it is, it is a historic district. It's a unique place that is beautiful and special. And it's not only special to those that live in the neighborhood, but to the entire community. I also bought because of the property values. Because I knew it was a stable investment due to the location and the beautiful homes around me. As someone who lives on the Dixie block, I want to protect my investment and quality of life. As you know, with the overly dense plan, the three hundred block is more vulnerable. I am very concerned that if this project is approved, it is not only going to decrease our property values, but it is also going to set the precedent over development along Dixie. As for parking, it is already hard for my neighbors and I to park our cars on the street without even having guests over. It's too intense of a use for this location and for the historic neighborhood. Please ask the developer to come back to you with a less dense plan that takes into consideration the importance of the historic district and all of those who have worked so hard to maintain and preserve this beautiful and peaceful neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have, um, Sharon Hendricks requested via Q and A to speak. Just one second. Okay, Sharon, you'll just need to unmute and start your video.
Ms. Hendricks, can you hear us? We need you to unmute and activate your camera. Both will be found the lower left-hand corner of your screen. There should be two icons, a microphone icon and a video camera icon. You need to left-click both those, and that should activate your camera and your audio.
Yeah, I just requested.
Oh, she just unmuted, so that's good. There she is, hello.
Hello.
There you are.
Yeah, I'm there.
Will you raise your right hand, ma'am? I would need you first to raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Sharon Hendricks. I am calling you from Albuquerque, New Mexico. I own the property at three twenty-seven Cordova Road. It has been in my family for fifty-four years. My parents bought it in nineteen sixty-six from the original owner. And at three twenty-seven Cordova Road, it is exactly next to the El Cordova Proposed Building. It was built in nineteen twenty-five. In on the property is a historic.
If you're watching on there.
Pardon? So I'm here in the spirit of my parents that bought that house and loved that house. And I'm concerned about the size and all the other issues that everyone else has brought up. I did meet with, um, Mr. Schmidt in August twenty nineteen, and I told him then the plan was too large. It would be better if the El Cordova building, because it's so narrow, could be like three stories or less. Um, because at that height, it's gonna be right up next with a twenty-five-foot setback. It's gonna be right on top of my property. I will never get to see the sun. My plants will die, and I'm concerned about my ninety-five-year-old house um, surviving the construction of those underground parking lots. And it's a beautiful neighborhood, and it's one that my family has cared for and loved for years. And I understand Mr. Cohen has a wonderful dream, but I just don't think that that dream has got to be at the expense of our beautiful neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, we have a request from Brian Kennedy. Just one second. Okay.
Nope.
Where are you, sir?
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Brian Kennedy. I live in El Cid and I'm on the Neighborhood Association Board. Um, I won't take up a lot of your time. Um, just, uh, I oppose the waivers being requested by the carefree site. And I think this meeting is a, a great example of what the problem is. Your first waiver request took maybe twelve or thirteen minutes, and they asked for one or two things. That's what waivers are. That's what variance is for. And I totally understand that, and I think most of my neighbors understand that. Um, asking for eleven different waivers, maybe twelve, can't remember. Um, it took an hour to, uh, present it, twenty or thirty slides. That's not a waiver request. That's throw the code out and give me what I want. Um, I think it, just in conclusion, that, uh, if they come back with one or two requests, I don't think you'll have this opposition that you have here. Uh, we all want development on that property. I don't know anybody in El Cid who doesn't want to develop that property. It's terrible the way it is now, but it needs to just be within the law. Just follow the law like everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I believe that's everybody who wanted to speak. I do have some written comments and Q and A that I can read, and I believe Hope has some emails, and then I do have two voicemails that.
All right, why don't we proceed?
So the written comments and Q and A, Ken Miller said, are there any residential neighbors that live in the area that support this project? A gentleman by the name of Jim says, has a light slash sun study been conducted to see the impact of sunlight given the seventy-one-foot height of the property? Uh, Alyssa Waite wrote, what will be done to mitigate the vibrations needed to go down far enough for a two-level garage? I live near the fifteen fifteen site and the vibrations and noise were deadfall. Caused concrete to crack. And she also said the historic Mango Promenade does not support the project either. Uh, Michael Kirkpatrick said, I am the resident and owner of two eight-two Barcelona Road. Please have Mr. Cohen, Cohen have meaningful negotiations with El Cid. This project is far too large. Cutback theaters fifty percent. And I believe that's all of the written comments and Q and A, so Hope, I don't know if you want to read the emails.
Well, if they've been submitted, we've all had a chance to read them. I don't know if we need to repeat them in the record. Is there, is there something that's arrived new? Then yes, provide it to us. But we all, we've received copies and we all had an opportunity to read them prior to this hearing.
Mr. Chair, there were two additional, uh, public comment forms that were submitted. Uh, one from Mr. Peter Cruz, who says he support the proposed land use change for the former Carefree Theater Project. And Mr. Rex Kirby, who states, as a business owner located in West Palm Beach, I am enthusiastic about the Carefree Theater Project. As one of the projects on the South Dixie Corridor, I think it will really add to the West Palm Beach's plans for the growth and revitalization of the area and continue to make our city attractive to both businesses, residents, and visitors. The new design revisions accommodate many of the previous residents and cities' concerns, and I wholeheartedly give my support. I feel strongly that this will add depth to our city's art scene as well as improve local property values within the area. I would like to see this project move forward, and I encourage you to approve it. End of this statement.
All right, is there anything else that we need to read in the record before we proceed to the next phase?
So, Mr. Chair, I have two voicemails, and the, just to clarify, the emails I was referring to were ones that were submitted to the city's planning at W P V inbox. Um, so I don't know if the board saw them. It's up to your discretion.
Okay, how many, how many are there?
So there are three emails, one from Jeffrey Rossen.
Why don't you go ahead and read them in the record then?
Okay, this one's a little lengthy, but.
If it's lengthy, maybe we should just distribute it to us for our private reading. But why don't, why don't you make, uh, why don't you do the best you can? Go ahead, John.
Says, my name is Jeffrey Rossen. I live at two thirty-nine Sunset Road in El Cid. I've been a part-time resident for the past nine years. I chose this community for its quality of life, low-scale development, eclectic mix of historic homes, and a unique proximity to the more urban downtown. In the past nine years, I have lovingly restored nine homes, nine homes that once restored and renovated both respect the scale and history, both give back loving, lovingly to their new owners, and more importantly, to the community. I asked both planning board and the developer, not what are the improvements made in this revised proposal, but rather, what does this proposal offer us as a community? What quality of life components are we given in exchange for the eleven requested variances? The proposal does not improve our quality of life, but rather piggybacks on the hard work and efforts of those in the community. Briefly, I've questioned the effects of the following, and I'll, I'll just paraphrase the topics. One is parking ingress egress into the site. Um, how do overlapping events at the Norton Sculpture Garden and Carefree not create gridlock? Will the city implement finance and manage the cost of the resident-only street parking? Noise control, noise control. Um, infrastructure. How are we to protect nearby historic hundred-year-old homes? Uh, rising coastal sea levels, over scaled vertical horizontal building volumes. Uh, eastern boundary walls and the five-plus-story structures offer no increased quality of life. Um, ironically, this project is a scaled down as a right configuration with a strong dose of community input. Um, could create the vibrant bridge between the eastern and western historic communities. I strongly urge a no vote. Uh, then there was one from India Foster. Lives at two fourteen Sunset Road. It's absurd. Calls for waivers and a massive density increase. It's not well-suited to the area. The developers want to build a little city place on a space the size of a dime. A six-hundred-person movie theater with thirty-foot ceilings, fifty apartments, restaurants, retail space, and two-story below ground parking garage. This plan calls for incredibly invasive subtraining, construction, and building overly high edifices that are way too large compared to the historic houses next door. To build something valuable in and for those locations, the developers need more sensitive to the space and location. Next, the idea for the movie theater built above ground parking garage have twenty-five apartments and just a few stores. The Dixie Corridor and its surrounding neighborhoods are organically booming with restaurants, shops, and businesses, creating huge property tax base and generating massive amounts of business revenue. Grand scale developments are not what we need. Then there is one from Mr. Coons. Jeff Coons, I've been involved in redevelopment on Dixie Highway for thirty years. It was a city commi, I was a city commissioner for eleven. We never expected that kind of density in the Dixie Corridor. We had numerous opportunities for cop plan changes, but never the density slash intensity in this particular site. Never considered for anything like this ever before, and all the planning studies we did for Dixie Highway from downtown to the end of Dixie Highway. It's too intense, have them start over. And then I do have two voicemails that I can play real quick.
All right, thank you. Please proceed.
Just one second.
Unless over three minutes, then stop them.
Nope, they're not.
Good afternoon, my name is Paul Kalasar. I'm the owner of K R H one LLC at nineteen thirteen South Dixie Highway. And I received in the mail today, the planning board case number one seven one two. See like Charlie. And the question that I wanted to pose here was, in this vicinity, there's no public parking garage and street parking is kind of sparse. I wanted to see if there is something within the plan that they have to not take away the existing street parking that might be there by Flamingo and on Dixie with this new proposal that they're doing for the theater and the residential and retail units. Essentially, to make sure that the parking within the vicinity would still stay at the capacity that we have right now, we wouldn't be losing anything for a street parking. Because obviously, a lot of these businesses that are here rely on their customers to be able to have sufficient parking so they can come inside and, you know, and purchase. Thank you very much. Any questions, you can always call me in my office, five six one six seven one four six two zero, again, Paul Kalasar.
So I just have one more voicemail.
I would be greatly affected by the construction of, at the Carefree Theater Site. This would greatly affect the traffic and the parking on Barcelona Road plus Flamingo Road plus Cordova Road. It is a problem now, especially when P V A U is in session with students. I think it's totally too massive for this area, and in, and I am totally opposed to it. Thank you. Bill Trowler.
All right, John, has everyone from the public who wish to be heard has given, been given that opportunity?
A Mr. Peter Cruz did raise his hand.
All right, why don't we bring him on in?
Okay, Mr. Cruz, you just need to start video and unmute yourself.
There you go. Raise your right hand, sir.
I just want to reiterate my comment.
Mr. Cruz, Mr. Cruz, I need to swear. Do you swear from the testimony about to give this proceeding will be truthful?
Absolutely, yes.
Please state your name for the record, and then you can proceed with your remarks.
Dr. Peter Cruz. I'm a resident at Rosemary Square, and, but I grew up here, I'm a native West Palm Beach person, and I went to the Carefree for many years, and I know Chuck Cohen, and I think the the project he proposes, the new revised one, is absolutely appropriate for the neighborhood. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. John, have we covered everyone for the public who wishes to be heard?
I do not see anything else from the public for comment, no.
All right, then I'll bring it back to the board for a moment, and to see if you have any questions of either the applicant or of staff. I have some, but I'd rather you folks go first before I do. No, I just questions, I'll start while you're all looking. And this is for staff. You know, one of the, one of the strongest complaints, the most off repeated complaint is, is the massing, the size of the project for its space. Can you give me an idea as to what is allowable of right today for that site?
Let me pull out my notes here. So for the El Flamingo Building, by right, uh, let's see, based on the provided setbacks and the limitations of the code, they would have an allowable height of forty four point three six feet. For the El Cordova Building, based on the provided setback of twenty five feet, they would be allowed a maximum height of thirty five feet.
Thank you for that. All right, any other questions of staff or the applicant? Scott, you need to unmute yourself, thank you, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, this is for staff. Have there been any city organized discussions for the public, opportunities for the public to comment? Sure, it's or anything like that regarding this, you know, the redevelopment of this property? Or has it all just been meetings organized by the applicant?
Meetings organized by the applicant.
Thank you.
Any other questions of, of staff or the applicant? Mr. Schmidt, I promised you an opportunity to give a very brief response, and then we're going to bring it back to the board for discussion or vote.
I will be brief, I just have four points. You know, during these presentations, you know, I hear parking, parking, parking. And I don't know any other development that has provided this type of innovative designs. I mean, two floors below parking, no surface parking to be in their neighborhood, which would be very offensive in a historic neighborhood. No visibility to cars, all within a building. And in addition to enhancing Cordova, Barcelona, Dixie Highway, and Flamingo with additional parking. I, I mean, by, by just standard code, we're over thirty five, not counting the sheer parking. So I'll just point that out. The concerns about the noise, the project will have to meet all the noise ordinances that are that are in place and enjoyed by everyone in the neighborhood. The construction and vibrations, it's very common practice for a contractor to monitor this, monitor the neighborhood with seismic sensors, sensors, and make any accommodations that are required to not affect the properties. And number three, and finally, I think that you've heard both sides testify that there has been considerable meetings. And we would like to continue those meetings. Tonight is the first time that I've ever seen or heard of anything written. And, you know, in working with them, the finish line always keeps moving. So I'm happy to see the seven standards that, or seven requests that Mr. Lawler has proposed. We will look forward to gathering their support, as he stated. And I will commit to you to continue to work with them and try to meet those. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. All right, let's bring it then back to the board for discussion. And eventually, I'd like to hear from each of you. And I'm going to begin with Scott, because I believe this is the first meeting where he is a full fledged member now. So, so with that comes a wonderful opportunity of being our leadoff person.
I expected there to be hazing, Mr. Chair. So.
What are your thoughts? What are your thoughts based on everything you've heard?
I'm really, I'm, I'm a little torn here, because number one, I overall, I think it's a great project, and I think it's a great concept. And I think it'll be a wonderful addition to, to the city. And not only to the city and the region as a whole, but also in particular to this neighborhood. You know, we heard the testimony tonight, and I, of course, I'm, I'm in that area all the time. But we heard about the, you know, the arts corridor and, and the burgeoning, you know, cohesiveness of this area with Emco there, the stores, the restaurants, the, you know, P, the connection to P B A U, so so I just think it's a great project. That being said, I mean, you know, I don't think anyone can sit through the, I don't know, hour and a half of public comment that we sat through from the neigh, from, you know, from the aggrieved neighbors and not be, you know, at least consider, you know, considerate, if not moved by some of their concerns. I do think, though, that Mr. Schmidt, I think Mr. Schmidt's rebuttal was succinct, but very well taken on a lot of his points. You know, my, the number one concerns that I have had since I first heard about, since I first had the meeting with Mr. Schmidt and reviewed the materials, and, and that were, you know, sort of seconded by some of, a lot of the public comments, and I dealt with two major issues. One being the the general sort of stormwater concerns, the, you know, the variance requested for the impervious surface area, as well as, you know, concerns about any pumping that may be necessary or anything that may, you know, that may be caused by the subterranean parking and runoff from the property. And also the, the height, you know, I mean, the height, the height issue. I'm not concerned about the parking personally, I think, Mr. Schmidt, I mean, to my mind, I thought that the, I, I think that there were satisfactory, you know, satisfactory explanations and provisions in the materials that were submitted by the applicant, as well as was presented by the applicant here tonight. And I didn't hear any, you know, real concerns about that from staff. And I don't think that there, and I, and I, I think there are workarounds for, I think there will be solutions for any such issues that they may cause. And also, I think the fears are frankly a little overblown. I mean, considering that the main part of this project is a six theater art house film theater. You know, these aren't blockbusters, these, these, this isn't going to, this isn't another, you know, AMC from, from Rosemary Square being put here. So that doesn't really concern me. That being said, look, I, I'm of the opinion that, given that while the concerns of the people in, in, in El Cid are certainly valid, and I do think special attention needs to be paid by staff to moving forward to the eight foot concrete wall and to the, you know, to the plants that will be planted along that wall to create a sufficient barrier between the back of this property and the abutting properties. I think that its height overall is, is in character with the, in my opinion, with the neighborhood that is, and it's immediately in that, that fronts Dixie Highway. And so, you know, I'm of the opinion that I think this is a project that we ultimately ought to approve.
All right, thank you, Peter.
All right.
It's usually your leadoff one, but, but Scott comes to you today.
I, I don't have any issues with all the waivers that are being requested. And when you look at all the letters that were submitted, you know, the common theme is always stormwater, traffic, parking, buffering. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about those main issues. We have a traffic study, and it's very clear that the consultants have said that there are no issues. There is traffic coming already in the side streets. The delays to Dixie will be minimal. And as the planner said, the movie theaters are going to be staggered. So it's not as if you're going to have six hundred people, and it's people, not cars, exiting all at once. I think that's a very important fact. In terms of stormwater, you know, I, I, this is totally blown out of proportion. The problem in the area and was touched upon earlier is the king tides. That's what's causing the flooding. One project on Dixie, which asking for a reduction in impervious surface, when you consider that the aquifer, which includes all of Palm Beach County, is over a hundred thousand square miles in area. One little project like this is not going to have an impact, regardless of the fact whether it's got ten percent less or ten percent more impervious or pervious, whichever way you want to look at it. So the king tide is the issue, and it was presented that the city is looking at it to try and resolve the issue of, of the flooding. In terms of, one other letter, it said shading and airflow. I think to me that the residents to the west are going to benefit from the project, because it's going to give them a little bit of shading in late afternoon, which is the most undesirable time of the day and the heat from the sun. Traffic, we talked about stormwater, we talked about parking, to me, is a non-issue. There's ample parking, underground parking. And, you know, later on, if there is an issue on street parking, the city and the commissioner can certainly look at of ways of restricting parking on the street by imposing all sorts of measures. There was a comment from this expert talking about the U L I recommendations. And she said it was one to two stories, was that's not correct, it's three stories along Dixie. Comments made about decreasing value of properties. I see no evidence whatsoever that that would be the case. So when you look at the city's conclusion, is the encouragement of vibrant, vibrancy in the area, mixed use as an, is an attractive, highly desired and appropriate use. The project does not exceed the maximum allowable, they are keeping to the one point five F A R in the thirty two dwelling units per acre. So it's not an overdevelopment of the site at all. The zoning and, and land development regulations unfortunately doesn't address development in urban infill. So it talks about large areas. And that's the difficulty when you're trying to develop an infill law. You can't fit everything appropriately because of the size of the land area. And I think that the staff's opinion, professional opinion that they requested waivers and, and property development comply with the city regulations, I agree with that wholeheartedly. As I said earlier, too, I think that the reduction of the fourth floor is a great step in the right direction to try and mitigate the, the sort of the contrast in height between the two story buildings to the west and the new development. I think this new development will be a great addiction to, addition to Dixie Highway.
I thank you, Andre. I need to unmute. And unless this is a commentary on what you want to say.
Hello there. All right, so, yeah, I wanted to commend the staff for the artist of work that this project has entailed over the last several years. I also want to commend the, the owner and his team of designers and architects to come up with a plan that we've seen tonight and seen it morph into what it is today. It's a fabulous project. I have serious reservations about the scale of it still. I had some reservations from the previous iterations and feel that they've come a long way. But when I saw the, the model, if you want to call it a model, blocks or whatever, that really kind of set the reality of, of what this project will ultimately be. It's a, like I said before, it's a, it's a fantastic project. I think that Schmidt Nichols did a great job with, you know, telling, you know, where kind of the, the evolution of this project and how it's, it's been reduced over and over and over and over again. And although I think that they've, they have done a tremendous amount of work to, to get it to where it is today, I, I just feel like there's just maybe a little bit more room there to reach out to neighbors. I would recommend putting a model together. I think this kind of investment would really, a model would go a long way. a model would go a long way in showing the scale of this prop- property and, and the project and how it relates to the rest of the, the neighborhood. Uh, I don't, um, in contrast to what Scott had said, uh, I don't think that this project is to, to scale. Um, I think it's, it'll be one of the bigger, bigger buildings on Dixie. And yes, it is in L Sid and when you look at all the, the property values of those homes and you compare it to this project, uh, yeah, I, I think that they will benefit from it and, and I don't know, uh, if it will reduce, uh, the desire to live there before it would reduce the property values and maybe the two are tied hand in hand. Um, but, uh, uh, this is a very, very difficult dec- decision to, to come to. And, um, but I'm just going to keep thinking about, listen to everybody else and what, what their thoughts are.
Thank you. Deborah.
Okay. Um, you know, and, and listening like everybody else has said, I looked at the main topics of objection from, from the residents and it seems like they were the same across the board, the, the buffering, the parking, the traffic, the stormwater and the size. And I guess with the size and intensity, um, the comments that this was only 1.8 acres. But I also looked at this, this is a tremendous project and want to thank the staff for, for, um, for delving into this and, and providing such a detailed informative research-based report. Um, as well as the owners who continue to go back and go back to the drawing board. I appreciate that the table one that shows, um, you know, the original plan from 2016 to 2019 and the concessions that were made, all the modifications that were made, uh, after talking to the residents. I know there was a disagreement about, um, whether the owners met with the residents a number of times. Some said it was three. Owners said it was 13. But, um, I think that this is a project that, th- this project will meet or match or connect with the previously established arts area that's already there. Um, I think the underground parking, um, is really going to relieve some of the parking concerns that the residents have. Um, the eight foot wall that's going to, um, create the concrete barrier. That's a plus. And, um, I really can't, um, compliment the staff again for giving us such detailed information about each waiver and how it will affect or not affect the impending project. Um, I don't have a problem supporting this, this project.
Thank you. Todd.
I think that, um, you know, I think there's a critique tonight that, that because the original plans going back to 2016 for this project never actually came before the planning board or the city commission, um, that, that somehow the, um, reductions in the scale of the project somehow don't count. Uh, but I would, I would kind of argue that, you know, I think that a applicant that starts down a path and realizes that they're proposing something that's going to be out of scale or, or not, um, supported or strongly not supported by, uh, staff or this board or, or the neighborhood and then chooses to kind of change paths and scale things back, that we should commend that and encourage that. So I, I do take into account some of the concessions they've already made, even though those applications never actually made it to our board for hearing. Um, also I want to commend the neighborhood groups for, you know, reaching out and meeting with us ahead of time. Sometimes we don't hear from them until the actual evening of the hearing. And then also to come here tonight with a list of, of concrete things that they would like to see incorporated into the project, I think is helpful. Um, I think we heard Mr. Schmidt commit to try and implement some of those things. And some of them seem like they would be, uh, a no-brainer as far as, uh, noise mitigation and monitoring, um, traffic attendance for special events. So I'd like to see those things incorporated, um, as the, um, project continues to be kind of worked on and potentially moved to the city commission. Uh, but I do support the project. I do, um, place a lot of, uh, trust and emphasis on the staff's analysis as far as the waivers, the size of the building. I think we saw modified condition tonight that did attempt to step back those upper levels and address some of the neighborhood concerns. So, um, I'll just conclude by saying I, I do support the project and feel it will be a net benefit for the area.
All right. Thank you. Well, I'll add my own comments. I love this project, everything about it except its location. You know, and Scott, your comments just so echo my own thoughts. This is a very tough vote for me. Um, because, um, I am concerned about the massing, the size there. Uh, but architecturally, I think it's a beautiful building. Culturally, I think it's a, it's a real benefit to the city along the south corridor. I think it's going to be a shot in the arm. Um, there's a lot of things to recommend it. Um, I'm, when I'm in my own mind reviewing some of the critiques, I, some of the critiques are just go to the nature of having any kind of commercial function there. Some of the complaints were about the old carefree theater, how people would park in the residential streets or leave broken bottles or things too. That has nothing to what we're doing here today. I think the applicant has gone far with the, the underground garage is amazing to me and, and that they would deal with the parking in such a way. I'm skeptical it's going to have a negative impact on the value of the homes. I'm not skeptical that some of the residents won't like it. It'll affect their quality of life. But that's the funny thing about, about property values. Sometimes something you may not like actually enhances the value of it. And my next door neighbor had a one-story building next to me. I had a really nice view. He added a second story. For my personal pleasure, it went down. I am confident by my home went up because a major investment was made so close to my home. So those are, those are two separate issues. Um, Peter, when you went through some of the critiques, I agree with much of what he said. I'm, the one thing that troubles me is just its size. And so I wrestle with that. I, I'm leaning towards supporting the project at the end of the day for this simple reason. We're the planning board for the city of West Palm Beach and not just the planning board for any one community. And I think this is something so good for the city that it, it nudges me to support it, but it's a tough, close decision for me. And I really hope the, um, applicant seriously engages with this neighborhood because we only make recommendations. The ultimate voice is going to be by the city commission. And there may be an opportunity to maybe make some improvements or some accommodations that may lessen the impact on these neighbors. So those are my thoughts. Anyone else have anything like to add? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Um, I move approval on planning board case 1712C with, uh, 15 conditions and 12 waivers.
We have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Is anyone opposed? One in opposition. So it carries five to one. Thank you, everyone. All right. We now move to our next case, which is a code revision case.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just give me one second.
Sure. And Andre, I kind of like that because I'm so conflicted myself, a unanimous vote doesn't feel right to me. You know what I'm saying? You, you're muted, son. So I, if you're saying anything, but that is funny.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I, I mean, it's like I said, I'm, I'm on the fence.
I, I, I was, I was too. So I was glad we weren't unanimous because that's not how I feel.
Yeah, I, I, I really, you know, I hope, you know, like you said, we're not the last, you know, stop on this bus trip. So there, I think they've got their, and they're going to really hold their feet to the fire. Um, and make sure that they get exactly, you know, as close to what they feel is appropriate for the neighborhood. And I think that the, the commissioners will really weigh in very heavy with, with what, what they're, you know, coming to the table with. So.
Agreed.
Definitely, it's definitely not the end of the line.
I could not agree more. Let me make sure I have the right code revision case. Let's see, this is going to be case number 2004. And you all have a full five minutes to make this presentation because we have to catch up for lost time. I hope that won't be an issue. Just teasing, of course. Let us bring to code revision case 2004. Would anyone who plans to speak or offer testimony, please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
All right. Thank you. So let us hear from the applicant, Mr. Oyer.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. Um, this will be a lot, uh, easier and less controversial for you, I hope, uh, but equally as exciting for our community. So, uh, Joe, is that you pulling this up? You have control?
Okay. So Harvey, just want to make sure. Yeah. Can everybody see my screen?
We can. I don't know if you, it needs to be maybe a little bigger because I'm not sure we're only seeing part of it. If that makes sense. If you could just lengthen it or something.
Let me do it.
I know if you can, don't worry about it. I, I don't know how much of the screen you intend to take.
How is that now? That's, that's the full screen mode.
Okay, let's try that. It should be fine.
Okay. Um, good evening. So, uh, before you tonight is uh, a, a couple of text amendment requests within the downtown master plan. The, uh, requests are in what is called the industrial chic, uh, ICD V and Balesford Park District Residential. So ICD V and BPDR. Um, I'm going to, uh, try to quickly go through the technical request. Then I'm going to turn it over to my client, Joe, first to give you, uh, the bigger idea of what it is we're trying to accomplish. So we'll split this presentation in half. Uh, Joe, could I get the next slide, please? So the geographic area that we're discussing tonight is bounded by the Florida East Coast Railroad on the west, Dixie Highway on the east, 11th Street on the north and Quadrell Boulevard on the south. Next slide, please. Now this breaks it down into the downtown master plan sub-districts. In green, along the west side of North Railroad Avenue is the ICD V, uh, sub-district. Uh, to the east of that, on the east side of North Railroad Avenue is the BPDR district. Uh, and, uh, s- to the right of that, on the west side of Dixie Highway, you'll see in purple, the, uh, BPD V sub-district. Uh, that's included only as a point of reference. Those are the commercial buildings on the west side of Dixie Highway. We are not proposing any changes to the purple, only to the green and to the light blue. So this is, uh, an area just north of the core of the downtown. Next slide, please. So, uh, our requests are several and I'll, uh, break them down, um, in, uh, as simple a terms as I can. These are zoning and land development regulation text amendments to two of these sub-districts. The one in ICD V is to expand the permitted uses. And let me back up here and give a little background that may be useful. When Bernard Ziskovich created our current version of the downtown master plan, and I forget it was 13, 14, 15 years ago. Um, I, and I was actually part of that committee, so I have some recollection of it. Uh, this sub-district, which is basically all warehouses along the FEC railroad, I don't think there was a vision for this being anything in the future. I, I think the zoning that was attached to it and the permitted uses had a great deal to what it had historically been used for. Meaning it had been warehouses all these years. Uh, the proposed uses going forward, um, included warehouse type of uses as well as, um, design arts related, thus the name industrial chic. So the use table for this district revolves around design arts related uses. Our proposed uses expand that to permit other uses. Uh, there is a note in the permitted use table P5, which we're going to discuss in a moment, and P12. P12 limits the number of patrons at a restaurant in this zoning district to 75, uh, probably because no one ever contemplated that more than 75 people would want to go to a restaurant uh, along the railroad tracks. So we're, uh, the big picture is we are attempting to expand, uh, the permitted uses in ICD V. With respect to the light blue area, uh, to the east, the BPDR, uh, we are requesting a zoning text amendment to permit off-site accessory surface parking to serve the hopefully expanded uses on the west side in ICD V. So the text amendments in greater detail, you can see at the bottom of your screen. It is to allow accessory surface parking on what are only vacant properties along only Railroad Avenue and Spruce. So that's saying two things to you. One, we cannot tear down, uh, any, uh, existing buildings to create parking. We can only utilize existing vacant properties. Uh, and it has to have frontage along Railroad Avenue or Spruce so that we are not encroaching into the, the core or the heart of the BPDR district. Now, as it turns out, all of the vacant properties already along Railroad Avenue are already either parking lots or what look like parking lots, but they're technically approved only as, uh, storage. And so it is storage of vehicles and items for the warehouse owners to the west. So the character of that actually wouldn't change. It would only get better. And as it turns out, my clients, who you're going to learn more about and what their vision is, already own or control almost every one of those vacant parcels. So we have a great deal of control over the limits of this and what it would look like. Uh, uh, in small B, as in Bravo, when located in a residential sub-district, surface parking lots will not be required to comply with minimum setbacks required for the district. That's because they're a parking use. Uh, and C, surface parking lots shall comply with all landscape requirements uh, in section 94 dash 443C, uh, which that is a technical way of saying, if we turn these into parking lots, we have to bring those up to the parking lot code requirements, which they currently do not meet. Next slide, please, Joe. Now this gets into the permitted use table. And, uh, I'm going to read from my paper version, which I can see a little bit better. In, uh, the industrial chic district five, which is the left, uh, highlighted column, which is the district we're speaking of, you'll notice we're proposing to delete the P5. The P5 is that requirement that any, uh, live work use in this case be design art related. We want to remove that collar or limit, limitation so that we can have live work uses in this district regardless of whether or not they're related to, uh, design arts. Uh, you'll see that, uh, P5 has been deleted in the commercial office section for the same reason. It's been deleted in the other commercial for the same reason. Uh, the P21 will remain and I'll, uh, discuss that in a moment. And the P12 is proposed to be deleted. The P12 is the limitation of 75 seats in a restaurant that I spoke about earlier. So should you approve this and should the city commission approve it? Uh, and a, a restaurant can be established in the ICD V district regardless of how many seats or patron. And a restaurant can be established in the ICD V district regardless of how many seats or patrons it may have. With respect to P21, that note will remain. And what that is, is it permits light industrial uses are permissible when associated with a retail component that occupies a minimum of 20% of the tenant space. So imagine a bakery or a brewery or a coffee house that has a retail frontage where you can buy fresh made bread, coffee or beer. But in the back, they actually have the brewery or the bakery or the coffee grinders. This would allow those to operate as a light industrial use, provided they are accessory to a retail frontage. So those are the proposed changes to the ICD V. You'll notice in the column to the right that the same changes are proposed in the ICD II sub district. This is for consistency purposes. The staff has proposed this, not the applicant. However, we're in complete agreement with it so that whether you're in ICD V or ICD II, you are allowed the same permitted uses. You'll notice at the top of the column that there's a strike through on three and replaced with two. This is interesting. There never has been an ICD III. This is a typo in the code that we're now correcting. But I think that's illustrative of what the problem is in this zoning district. There has been so little or no activity in the 13, 14, 15 years since this was created that no one's even bothered to notice that there's a typo in the code. That's how little I think the code has been consulted, which is quite remarkable. We are in the longest real estate bull market in the history of our state. There are projects in every corner of our city except here, which I've always found astonishing, given that it is a few blocks from the core of our downtown. Fortunately, I think all that is going to change when you hear from my client. But these are the code revisions that we're proposing to both ICD V, which is our request, and ICD II, which is a staff request for consistency. Next slide, please. And this is the proposed change to the Bresford Park R sub district. You'll see the note on P5 being added for the off-site accessory parking. This is what would allow those vacant parcels that are presently being used for parking or storage on the east side of Railroad Avenue to be utilized for parking to service what we hope will be a much more enlivened and active west side of North Railroad Avenue, provided that that parking meets the three requirements outlined earlier, which brings them up to modern parking code. Next slide, please. So for you to pass judgment on our request, you must apply section 94-32A, which are the amendment standards and compliance. We believe we're in compliance with all eight. I will spare you going through each of those individually. Should you want to discuss any of these, I'm delighted to do so. But we believe we meet them and staff concurs. Next slide, please. So our request is to respectfully seek the approval of planning board recommendation for the zoning and land development regulation text changes that I just outlined. We believe that it complies with all of the amendment standards on the prior slide. We have a staff recommendation for approval. We had a neighborhood meeting via Zoom in September that was actually heavily attended. I think we had about 20 people participate, which is pretty heavy for a Zoom neighborhood meeting, particularly in a neighborhood where there is very little homeownership. This neighborhood, Mr. Mayans, I know you're familiar with it because it's very near your home.
My home, and you said a neighborhood, no.
But for the benefit of others, historically, this was a residential, single-family neighborhood. But over the decades, it has transitioned largely away from single-family residential, though there's a few of those remaining, to multifamily, commercial vacant lots. It's truly a mixed bag and cannot be characterized as any particular type of neighborhood at this point. And we didn't frankly expect a large neighborhood turnout, but we did. And I don't want to speak for them, and Anna Maria can speak more directly to this. But I would characterize it as receiving quite a bit of support for this, particularly from all of the warehouse owners and commercial owners in the area who also have been hamstrung over the years when they've tried to lease their properties and were greatly limited to only design art related uses. And clearly, there were few to zero design arts related uses, which is why this sub district needs the shot in the arm that we're going to produce with your help. And finally, on October 14th, we went in front of the downtown action committee, which, as you know, has jurisdiction and great knowledge over the various sub districts. And we received unanimous approval from them. So we bring it to you, I think, with pretty good neighborhood DAC and staff support. And I've given you the very boring technical part. I'm going to turn it over in a moment to one of my two clients, who's going to give you a much more exciting idea of what is to go here and why we're seeking these amendments. But let me tell you a little bit about my clients. Ned Grace is one of them. He had to drop off earlier, which he apologizes for. Ned is a significant investor in our community with quite a big footprint from restaurants, hotels, commercial, multifamily to this project. You would know many of his properties and projects in the community. He lives here. In fact, his office is in this Bresford Park Commercial District on the west side of Dixie Highway. His partner in this, who is on the line and is going to make the presentation, is named Joe First. And Joe lives in Miami and really has a remarkable pedigree in urban renewal projects throughout the country. I will cite only one of them because I think we're all familiar with it. Joe was one of the principals of Wynwood in Miami. And Wynwood, on a larger scale, is very analogous to this. It was a blighted warehouse district in the Old Town section of Miami. And Joe and his partners went in and they did not tear down any of the warehouses. They didn't try to add height or density. What they tried to do was make them interesting through creative and cool adaptive reuses that, of course, put Wynwood on the map as one of the most exciting and successful arts districts in our country. And when I heard that Joe was part of this project, that generated excitement with me and others in the community because while much smaller, I think we're a better opportunity than Wynwood. We're closer to the heart of the downtown. We have the bones to do something really interesting. And I'll let Joe take over from here. But I do want to say, Mr. Chair and planning board members, this is an exciting opportunity. In all my years of doing projects in our downtown, no one has wanted to touch this area. And not only have these two guys come up with a plan, they've already executed on it. They already own or have under contract over 50% of the properties in this neighborhood. So they are committed and they are well-funded. And they have hired the best planning teams in the country to help them with this concept. So with that, I will turn it over to Joe. And unless, Mr. Chair, you want me to try to answer any technical questions from your board at this point.
Why don't we go ahead and hear from your client first?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time and consideration. It's obviously been a long night, and I'll try to make this brief. But as Harvey mentioned, I had the good fortune of meeting Ned Grace, who's my partner on this project, who unfortunately could not be here tonight. And basically, what I saw along the rail were these amazing, high-character buildings that really needed some life breathed into them with an amazing commercial core, which is North Road Ave., and then a series of vacant parcels across the street. So our business plan here is actually quite simple. It's to keep the character, keep the authenticity of the existing commercial core buildings that were built in between the 1920s and 1940s along the railway, do some roadwork improvements, some street improvements, some public realm improvements, and then create, of course, parking to service those buildings across the street. This is an image and overview. You'll see a series of these. But our business plan, as I just mentioned, very simple. Unlock the potential of the underutilized predominantly vacant buildings to enhance the pedestrian experience and commercial offerings for the immediate residential era and broader Palm Beach market. This image is taken looking north along North Railroad Avenue. All of the buildings that you see within the view here are buildings that we already own, with the exception of a couple of the buildings furthest to the north, which is a truck repair facility and then an art storage facility. But everything else that you see here, we already control and already own, as well as the lots on the east side of the road. For me, very simply, a successful commercial core has a vibrant and multi-use program. So as you can see with these buildings, we anticipate having food and beverage, retail, office offerings within these buildings. Again, this is all about adaptive reuse and preserving the character of this commercial core, having accessible parking. So as you can see, again, if you look at the image on the left side, all these vacant parcels that are on the east side of Railroad Ave., we've designed a really compelling parking plan with a linear park, which I'll show you as we get into this presentation. And again, just really doing a great landscape and open space offerings to create a better community and enhance public realm opportunities in an area that has been very much underutilized in West Palm Beach. Here's a very clear picture. So this is no different than what I was showing you before, but with a little bit more clarity. You can see the lots that are currently being used primarily as parking and storage, but they're not being used as of right legal uses. And frankly, we think we can do a much better job of repurposing these lots to create a more compelling pedestrian environment on the street. So we conceived this plan. So if you remember the previous picture, this is using those same vacant parcels. But here, we've already run this through the city from a permitting and design perspective. And this provides us about 88 parking spaces here with a linear park to front Railroad Avenue. This road is very rarely used. This isn't a large vehicular thoroughfare. This is really just an access road to service all of these industrial buildings. So our hope here is, again, to create a very exciting public realm for pedestrian use. And then potentially, as we get into the street improvements, even come up with plans to close down the street on the weekends for various events to create, you know, a better enhanced public realm and gathering space. In terms of the types of tenants and uses, this is all about creating lifestyle uses that serve the West Palm Beach commercial market, but really serve the residential that's immediately surrounding us. And of course, all of the density that's being built just to the south of us. So we see coffee shops, bakeries, cafes. As Harvey mentioned, I have a long history of capitalizing food and beverage entrepreneurs, as well as artist entrepreneurs. And we'd like to do the same here to give the local West Palm Beach market an opportunity to really shine in much, much, much less expensive space than you would find in the downtown along Clemata Street or in some of the other areas of West Palm Beach. And again, in a type of building that creates a fabric for authenticity and for experimentation and entrepreneurship. As Harvey mentioned, I won't go too much into us because I think Harvey covered it. But I was the managing partner for company Goldman Properties for 10 years in the development of the Wynwood neighborhood. I have other urban renewal projects as well in Doral, in St. Petersburg, Florida. And still I'm very active in Wynwood. I started my own firm in 2018 called Place Projects. The reason why I named my company Place Projects is that I believe in place-based planning and place-based programming. And my goal here is to not import things from out of the West Palm market. It's more to rejuvenate the existing buildings, that existing area, and really breed and bring people up within the West Palm market. Ned, my partner from NDT Development, has a long history of not just being on the development side of real estate, but also in operating businesses and is very well-connected to the West Palm market. And I think we make a good team to do this, not only sensitively, but do it really well and create an exciting set of attributes for the West Palm market that aren't currently in place. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
The share here so we can go back to full gallery view?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
You got it.
Any questions from the applicant before we hear from the staff? And if not, Anna Marie, is this yours?
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna... I'm gonna share my screen now, and I'm gonna do a brief presentation. The applicant did a great job explaining the request. Can you see my screen now?
We can.
Perfect. So I think what is important about this is Harvey explained a little bit of the history of the district. In 2009, when the downtown master plan update was created, the industrial chic district was definitely envisioned as a transitional district where the light industrial uses can coexist with the residential and commercial uses of the Bresford Park District. The intention of this area, because of the original stock, building stock of warehouses, was to adapt these buildings and renovate them as maybe a large working storefront, warehouse-style buildings that could have residential uses, house artists, and have, as he mentioned, designer-related uses. And that's why the kind of the restriction for the designer-related uses was included in here. It was envisioned as a kind of a typical district. It was not conceived as the same thing that the downtown core. The vision, as you know, has not materialized. The structures that exist in there are still vacant or continue to operate as storage uses. And basically, we have, sorry, we have we have still the area that has not evolved after all these issues. Nothing has really happened as we know. So what we have right now, it's a proposal from the developer that approached the city last year and wants to modify, and as the applicant said, make some changes and renovate this area and move these ahead as the way we see it, really compatible with the original, even with the original vision that the master plan proposed. The applicant's request basically will remove the requirement for designer-related uses and allow commercial office uses as currently permitted along the Dixie Corridor in the Bresford Park District V or even the urban core. That is, in essence, what happens. I mean, we have these specific restrictions in this particular area for the designer-related uses. And what the proposal does is remove these specific restrictions and open the commercial office uses as it happens in the rest of the downtown area. The staff supports this proposal as we think it is still compatible with the intent of the district. And as we, as Joe's mentioned, the restriction has not actually helped the proposed redevelopment and actually has kind of restrict the uses of these spaces for tenants that are proposing to find new tenants, new uses in here. So we totally support the proposal from the applicant. We'll accomplish, as I mentioned, the intent of the district as it was even originally conceived by the downtown master plan. So we totally support that. The second proposed amendment will allow off-site accessory surface parking lots within the Bresford Park District R. Staff has worked with the applicant modifying the proposed language to mitigate any negative impacts the surface parking may have in the residential district. We have limited the accessory to use, accessory to use is only within the industrial chic district V and only for those lots along the Railroad Avenue and Spruce Avenue that are basically facing those industrial chic district. We have included restrictions that do not allow the demolition of existing structures for the construction of surface parking lots. This is a provision that exists for the entire downtown, but we kind of put it back in here specifically for this district so to kind of have a second safeguard for this. And also, we have included and working with the applicant very specifically to ensure that the new surface parking lots will comply with all the requirements for surface parking lots. The only one that we kind of put a provision specifically that they do not have to require to comply. that they do not have to require to comply is regarding the median islands when you have more rows, more than four rows. So we allow them to have four rows of a parking without intermediate island. And this is related to the, basically, the size of these lots. So they will have perimeter buffers with shade trees along that. They will have the five-foot landscape buffer. They will have the wall protecting the residential neighborhood from the parking. So we have included all the provisions that will allow the surface parking to exist in a way that will not negatively impact the neighborhood and actually will become an asset as it will support the redevelopment of the properties on the west side of Railroad Avenue. We will, we believe the new surface parking lots, despite it's a use that we typically do not support in the residential neighborhood, in this case, due to the particular conditions of this area, will represent a substantial improvement to the current conditions. And as the applicant say, they are, right now, those properties are currently used for outdoor storage and in some cases, not very well maintained. So the proposal is a great, it will be a great improvement if the vision is materialized. As mentioned, only allow for those properties along the east side of Railroad Avenue and Estreuse Avenue, and also a accessory to uses on the west side of Railroad Avenue. The third proposed amendment will remove the density limitations to include within, currently included within the industrial shake District Five and industrial shake District Two. This actually is a proposal that was brought back to the applicant by staff. The current regulations have for industrial shake Five and Two, not only in addition to the FAR, they also have density limitations. The industrial shake District Five has a maximum forty dwelling units per acre, and the industrial shake District Two has maximum density of twenty dwelling units per acre. This is something that is not typical of the downtown. Most of the core of the downtown actually do not have density limitations. And we just simply control the number of units by the average unit size that we have in the downtown, that is eight hundred square feet, and the minimum unit size, that is five hundred square feet. In this particular district, it was included originally, but we have seen in occasions before when some developers have approached the city that the density limitation becomes a constraint for them. Because when you calculate the square footage of the project that you are allowed to build, the density will result in units that are too large for what the market will support. So we approached the developer when, or the applicant, when they brought this and suggested to include this change on these, at this time, to basically remove this limitation that we see it has been a constraint for any possible redevelopment. They supported, and we think it will be a good option at this point.
All right, thank you. Anything else you wanted to add, Anna Marie?
Yep, so staff has reviewed the proposed amendment and worked with the applicant on the modifications of the proposed language as presented today and included in the staff report. So the language that is included on the staff report as the proposed amendment is the language the staff work with the applicant, and we agree on those details. We recommend approval for this code amendment based upon findings that the proposed amendment complies with all the standards found in section ninety-four thirty-two of the zoning and land development regulation. After the approval from planning board, this case will be presented to the City Commission by the end of December. That concludes the staff.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Do we have anyone, John, from the public who wish to be heard on this application?
Personally, no public comment.
Okay, does anyone have any concern about what you've heard here today? I will say, my own home of thirty years is just a few blocks from here. I think it's terribly exciting what they propose. Can't wait to see it.
Thank you.
So I'm looking for a motion.
I move approval of Steve's hangout, future hangout.
It will be. I think you may need a little more formal language than Steve's hangout. You know how Sam gets.
I move approval, planning boards recommend that for case twenty dash oh four, this motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the staff report, and the findings that the proposed amendment complies with all the amendment standards found in section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the zoning and land development regulations.
You have a motion. Have we a second?
I'll make a second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those of favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, Andre? No. No in opposition. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we just have one more case. Planning Board Code Revision Case twenty oh five. And Mr. Green has promised to keep this very brief.
I will be quicker than the second case we heard tonight.
Oh, I was hoping, I was hoping you were gonna say.
I will be very quick. Can you see the slide?
We can.
Okay, great.
Actually, we're seeing your D drive. I know that's...
Are you not seeing the presentation?
No, I'm seeing your D drive.
Let's see what happened here.
If you're sharing the screen, if you pull up what you want to do and double-click that, that should work.
That's what I did. You're not seeing it now?
We're seeing the D drive and the breakdown of it.
Let me, let me stop share. I'm gonna start over.
All those payouts all laid out like that, Rick. I didn't know if that was good to share on the public record, but that's your business.
How about that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'll be very quick. I have six or seven slides. But this is a city-initiated request to amend chapter ninety-four of our development regulations to modify the language regarding the length of time granted to replace a non-conforming structure destroyed by windstorm, flood, fire, or other natural disaster. So what prompted this discussion is, as you may know, the city is working toward the redevelopment of the West Palm Beach Municipal Golf Course. And during our due diligence, it was discovered that forty-five lots within the boundaries of the existing golf course were titled in the name of Palm Beach County. So in other words, they have titled to these forty-five lots. So in order for the city to clear title and move forward with the redevelopment of the golf course, these forty-five lots must be conveyed to the city. So the city, as you know, is currently in discussion with the PGA of America to redevelop the course. And there was an inter-local agreement that was executed between the city and Palm Beach County. That inter-local agreement called for the city to transfer one hundred and ten thousand square feet of TDRs to Lot D outlined in red. And the purpose of the discussion tonight is to suggest a code amendment regarding the county's administrative complex. The Palm Beach County Governmental Center was built in nineteen seventy-two, approximately two hundred and five thousand square feet. It has a value of about forty-eight million dollars per the county property appraisers office. It has a building height of twelve stories and a hundred and seventy-six. But under the existing zoning where this property lies today, the Quadrial Garden District Ten, that allows a height of ten stories or a hundred and twenty-eight feet. So the structure is considered a legal, non-conforming grandfathered structure. The county has expressed concern that in the event of significant damage to the structure, they would not be permitted to repair or rebuild the complex. So the current language in our code right now allows an applicant eighteen months mid-building permit to the city should a structure be demolished by a windstorm or natural disaster. So we've slightly modified the language in section ninety-four to appease the county and get them a little bit more comfortable. So we added fire to the list of disasters, and we listed other natural resources or other natural disasters. And the additional language you see that we've added is reflected in the green color. So we've added the owner of a public facility destroyed by a windstorm, flood, added fire, or other natural disaster may apply for a building permit for reconstruction so long as it is submitted to the building division within eighteen months after the date of destruction with the right, and this is the new language we're speaking, with the right to obtain a six-month administrative time extension from the Planning and Zoning Administrator. So that, in essence, effectively gives them twenty-four months to prepare plans to renovate, restore the structure. In all likelihood, we really don't see this being an issue or ever happening. But nonetheless, we are modifying the language in the code to reflect the additional six months. The proposed language does meet all eight amendment standards of section ninety-four thirty-two A. Staff does recommend approval for Code Revision Case twenty dash zero as presented by staff. It was presented to the Downtown Action Committee on October fourteenth and approved by a six-oh vote. The inter-local agreement also calls for the item to be brought forward to the City Commission at its next meeting after planning board or final DAC action. So we will bring this to the City Commission on November thirtieth of this year. Palm Beach County indicated they were monitoring the meeting tonight. They indicated to me that they have no interest in speaking, but hopefully, they may still be on with us and monitoring. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff?
So is the building that flimsy that I worry that it's gonna...
Remember, they're monitoring this, Peter.
This is more of a suggestion. I just say, don't, I wouldn't let it get out that, you know, you're doing something nice for the county. That won't make...
Does anyone else have any questions of our, of our staff? And if not, John, is anyone from the public who wanted to be heard on this particular application?
No public comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay, does anyone have an objection to this proposed change? And if not, I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve Code Revision Case twenty oh five.
I'm sorry?
Gotta read it in. Gotta read the text.
Todd, you're not quite done.
Approval based on the findings that the proposed amendment complies with all of the amendment standards found in section ninety-four thirty-two of the zoning and land development regulations.
All right, we have a motion. Have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those of favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, we get to unfinished business and then new business, which is election of officers. Presenting, I serve as chair. Todd serves as vice chair. So we're open for nominations.
Nominate Steve Mayans to continue at the same salary as chair.
Are there any other motions? Any other motions for chair? I mean, any nominations for chair? So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Now, vice chair.
I nominate Todd McClough with an increase in salary.
Any other nominations? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you all. It was a long evening. Glad we got behind us, and everyone have a good week and everything. So we will stand adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy seeing all of you.
Thank you.